Good evening, I'd like to call to order tonight's August 11th work session of the Unionville Chad's Ford School District as we have voting items, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the world.
Alright, an announcement that the board met an executive session tonight to discuss personnel topics, including new high school assistant principals, an employee retirement and release agreement, student settlement agreement, an interim administrator, and two contracts for services. Now, it is my pleasure to pass the mic to our new superintendent, Dr. Tim Hoffman, to give his first superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Barata. Man, this is awesome. I'm so excited to be here. I didn't, I never thought like in my career that I would progress to the point where I have and in the place where I really wanted to do it, right? It's, sometimes you have to look for opportunities and to be, I'm just so fortunate, to be able to lead the place that I love, where raising my children, and that I care about so much. I just, you know, just heartfelt gratitude and thanks for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to leading the district, and now it starts tonight, right? So with starting, starts is kind of like the theme, right? It's how things are going. So it's the start of the school year, it really is, like it is, it is happening. It has been a busy summer to say the least. I think everybody on the board can attest to that too. There's been a lot of hiring that's been going on. So if you're into stats and into numbers, which I am, so I wanted to throw a couple stats out there for you a little bit, but so we hired nine administrators this, this summer. Now, they're not all brand new to us, but we hired nine and some of them switched positions, but and you know that we have quite a thorough process for hiring administrative staff, so think about nine of those processes as we've gone through the summer. Twenty-four teaching staff, so we've had replacing our retirements and resignations, and so we are, we are poised and ready, we're just about fully staffed when it comes to our teachers. Our new teachers report tomorrow for induction, so we'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. And addition to that, we've had twenty-one changes of positions amongst staff, whether it's support staff or professional staff, and that could be changes of assignment, building to buildings, sharing buildings, potentially moving from part-time to full-time. So when you look at all those different kinds of shifts with employment, so twenty-one of those. So quite a bit of, quite an active summer. Everybody asks, what do you do all summer? Most people don't even realize that we work in the summer, which is kind of funny. But, you know, I always liken it like to the off-season of a sports team. Like it's the time where you sign your free agents, like you're setting up the plan, the game plan for the season, and you know, that's, that's what we're doing now, and that's just as exciting as the school year sometimes, but not as exciting because the kids are coming back, which is gonna be great. I also want to talk a little bit about my transition, so the community is aware, and then all of you are aware. So my first hundred days, plan of entry, where I'm trying to meet with as many different people in the community as I can, that come, that's first responders, our community organizations that we partner with, religious organizations, et cetera, and I'm doing a lot of listening. Listening about what people find the strengths of our district, things that maybe I should be considering as the superintendent to think about in the future, what traditions are really important that we want to preserve. And so basically four questions that I'm trying to ask a lot of folks to collect some information about our district from as many different angles as we can, and I plan to present that in January after I've gone through what I'm calling my listening tour, right? So as we go through, just to see, get the state of the union, so to speak, as, as I'm out and speaking. So, one of the things that's been exciting about that is I've been able to share a lot about what is our focus, what are we thinking about over the next three to five years? And one thing that's resonated with me is we have amazing values as a district, and I'd like to bring them more forward in the next three to five years. We have the values of educational excellence, superior school environment, a people-centered culture, and principled stewardship. Four fantastic things to focus on, and I think that all of our work, we look at our work through that lens, and we become a values-driven organization. I think this is, this is the great trajectory and direction for our next three to five years, leaning into our strengths, leaning into our values, and driving any kind of innovation and change through our values. So you're gonna see a little bit of that tonight, when we get to the point of talking about our goals, our district goals. They're organized as such underneath the values, and the point of what makes it onto a, on the district goals here in this format, is we're talking about the things that are going to drive our values, right? How are we gonna improve our district based on the values that are important to us? A lot of us learn from Disney, who's a very values-driven organization, that focuses in leaning in on your values, is how you really make change and drive, drive impressive change, so we'll be leaning into those. You'll see that a little bit tonight, we'll start that discussion tonight with the board goals. This year, I had mentioned the word gratitude when we first started, that we're really leaning into that theme. We had a gratitude event, our administrators participated in, in our administrative cabinet, so we identified local businesses, organizations, and individuals that we wanted to say thank you to, and we paid them a personal visit. So we, we had five district vans that we took out into the community. We each had four stops, roughly four stops, to stop, provide some Northbrook Donuts, have a thank you card, and just introduce ourselves and talk about, you know, how grateful we are, not just for what you do for the school, but just the community in general. And so we were able to hit, you know, our police, local police, we were able to hit local organizations, and this is a theme that we'll keep throughout the year, right? So it wasn't just a one-and-done kind of a trip, we want to continue to recognize those in the community that really support our people, our schools, and our community in general. And so that will be the theme of our convocation, and as we work our way through the school year. It's a great piggyback as well to kindness, because I can't think of a better way to show kindness than to express your gratitude. So, so bottom line, can't wait for staff to return, we've got new teachers tomorrow, we have all teachers next week, sports started today, so if you're on campus, it was buzzing, the kids were everywhere. And full day K starts this year, what? That's amazing. So here's, here's the thing for you, so right now we have two-hundred-and-three kids registered so far for the class of 2039. Let that sink in a minute, to let that percolate a little there. Class of 2039, welcoming them this year, so very exciting. And, you know, but bottom line is, hold on, it's about to start. School year's ready, we're excited. The administrative team is, is ready, pumped, excited. I get to talk about a couple of our new folks here in just a second, but thanks again for the opportunity for the superintendent's report today, and thanks again for the opportunity. I, I am very excited and looking forward to the future, leaning into our values, so, thank you. That said, there are some people here that I would love to recognize. So, now we have four folks here that I want to talk about, and the way I wanted to do this a little bit, and I'm gonna give you them an opportunity to share a thing or two here, but to give you time in the sun though, I do want you to come up to the microphone when I call your name, so. So we'll start with, I'm looking here at my, my little list here, and MB is the first one, so MB is what we, we call her, Mary Beth Lyles, come on up. Welcome. So one of our voting items tonight will be the appointment of Mary Beth Lyles as one of our assistant principals at the high school, so we're very excited about that. For those of you who don't know, Mary Beth has, has served us as a counselor. She was, she was somebody, I leaned on a great deal in when I was in Dr. Jenkins' role, and she was always my go-to up there in the counseling office, led the counseling office, and then transitioned to dean, and she has just blossomed in that role, she has just been fantastic. And one thing I like to think about when, when I'm thinking about honoring people that are appointing is, but what comes to mind, what are the things that come to mind when I think of this person, right? And so, I did this for all of you, so, to be ready. But, you know, there are a couple words that really pop into my mind when I think about Mary Beth, and first one is dedicated. That is, you know, if there's somebody, if there's somebody's car, if somebody's car you're looking for after hours, I guarantee you one of the cars is Mary Beth. Her dedication to this place is unmatched. Caring, she cares, and it's partly tied to that dedication, she's so dedicated because she cares. And compassionate, I've just seen that side of her and her compassion for kids and the adults in the building. And so when I put that together, there's, there's so many more things, but when I put those pieces together, I really think of MB, right, of Mary Beth, so. Mary Beth, welcome. So we're excited to vote on this later tonight, but wanted to give you an opportunity to share anything that you might want to share before, before we bring the next person up.
Can you hear, am I good? Yes, okay, thank you, Dr. Hoffman, that was very kind. And yes, I just want to take a minute, and as I was thinking about this moment, I thought back over twenty years ago, when I got my assignment to do a practicum here, I thought I was the luckiest person in the world. And every single day that I've had the opportunity, really the gift to come here and, and work with students and families, I'm reminded that I am the luckiest girl in the world to work here. I am motivated by our students, I am dedicated because our students and families are dedicated. I care because I, it, it goes back and forth, so it's just an honor to, to serve this community. I mean that from the depths of my heart. I am eternally grateful for the people that came before me and taught me and showed me the way, and the incredible leadership that have served as wonderful mentors to me, I just want to say thank you. I am where I am because of the people that came before me, the students and the families that I, that I get to serve, and it's, it's really a gift, and I mean that, so thank you.
Thank you, MB. Okay, looking at my list, who's next? Mr. Pat Clark? It's in no particular order, by the way, it's just my rep. Alright, alright, so as many of you know, Pat Clark is now our new director of student activities, so we're very excited for that. You know, and so Pat, I've known Pat for, since I've been in the district, right? So, but I, I first knew Pat really more as a parent than I knew him as, as a teacher at the high school, as an English teacher there. And, you know, since, since came to know Pat over the years, as an English teacher, a gifted teacher, president of our teachers' union, but one of the things that always came to mind, right, that was always there, because either one way, shape, or form, I was either there monitoring middle school student behavior, or I was there with my own children, but he was always, he was always coach, right? He was a football coach, our winningest coach in the history of our district, and with a lot of success there as well. And I, I think that you don't become a successful coach at, at any level without certain qualities that, that are really important, that really drive, really drive people to make people better, right? And one of the things that I think, so when I go back to what I did with Mary Beth, you know, what is it that comes to mind when I think of Pat? I think about team, team player, I think about dependability, right? I, I think about those terms, and whatever you need is a phrase that comes to mind, like, Pat is a whatever-you-need kind of guy, right? He is for the team, he is about the team. He, he's been a great leader of teams, and I, I am so thankful that he is gonna be a part of our internal leadership team down here at district office, so the, the idea that I could bring him in to be as a part, a part of this team, and to be in our weekly meetings every, every day to help guide the direction of the district, can't think of a better person to be down there, down there with me. So, Pat, thank you for everything you've done. Thanks for being a great parent too, you gave me a lot of grace as I was a new principal, learning the ropes, so, but Pat, I'll turn it over to you, it's, if there's anything you, you wanted to share.
Thanks, Dr. Hoffman, and thank you to the board, I appreciate your support. I'm looking forward to this, this is a great opportunity, it's something that I don't, I can't say I thought of long-term, but in, in the really recent past, it, it, it just really fits a lot of, think of, of what I believe in in the district. As you know, I have five kids who are all UCFSD grads, and, and seeing them and, and what extracurriculars and athletics did for my kids to complement the education that they got here, I mean, thanks to their mother and to the district primarily, my kids are all successful, right? They survive in spite of sometimes. And, and you know, I really want to thank my wife for her support, my family, it's, it's, it's put a lot of time into the place, and I couldn't have done it without them. But as I, as I get older, what I see a lot, and I mentioned this in, in one of the interviews I was in, is there are a number of alumni who are coming back, and they are, they're now coming back to bring their kids here, and because they want the UCFSD experience, and I think as someone who's been part of the district for a long time, like that's what you want, right? When I see guys who played in 2005, '06, '07 saying, you know, I want my kids to come back, I want them to have the same experience I had, and I'm really excited to contribute in my new role, to kind of support students and, and be a piece to the puzzle, right, to complement the great experiences that they get here and to give them other opportunities. So, thank you, and I'm looking forward to it.
Alright, let's see, well my list next is Mr. Crater, come on up, Mr. Crater. Alright, thanks, Pat. Pat is, was approved in July as the new principal of Unionville High School, so welcome officially. And, you know, for those of you that don't know the history of Pat, you know, Pat came to us from, via Pendelco, and, you know, Pendelco is a wonderful district, and we have a lot of people that we've hired from Pendelco, I'll just leave it at that, but because I think their superintendent is kind of like, stop hiring my people, so, but to be fair, he, he develops good people. So, but Pat has been for us an AD, and, you know, I, I think any of us that have known Pat is, is that first role when he was with us in the district. The amount of time and effort, energy that he puts into his job is, is unmatched. He was, I mean, I, I feel like he was at everything. When I say I thought I was at everything, that, that he was at everything. And I remember thinking to myself, what an amazing person that, that cares that much about our district, that would be in our kids, to be at every, and to give up, you know, a lot, what he gives up, with the time commitment to be at these night events. Then he transitioned to the director of student activities before his high school principal appointment now, and then took activities to another level, so it wasn't just about sports, right? Now it was about the entire student experience after school, and during the school day, what went outside of the curriculum. And I give him a ton of credit for listening to me opine about my dissertation and the importance of extracurriculars and, and all those kinds of things. I appreciate your, your patience and me working through all of that with you, and how, how passionate I am about it. But I can't think of a better person to lead the high school, because when I think of Pat, I think of commitment, I think of commitment, I think of passion, and I think of culture, right? And those kind of things come to mind, and I think you're, you're fantastic at building culture, and building a positive culture, a clear culture that has clear norms, standards. Think about your work with the values and standards, with athletics, and I think that really speaks to, you know, what I think you're gonna bring to the high school, which is, which is, you know, passion, commitment, culture, a culture of learning and a culture of students excelling in, in the classroom and outside of the classroom. And so those are some of the things that pop into mind when I think about you, Pat, and what you bring to the district, and how happy I am that you're gonna be the high school principal. So, I'll turn it over to you, and see if you have any comments you want to share with the board or the community.
Yeah, thank you so much, Dr. Hoffman, for the, for all the kind words, that was very generous, thank you. The, I've been doing a lot of reflection lately, I was, just recently, I was sitting at the, at the principal's desk up at Unionville High School, and I was just thinking about the, all the crossroads, like how did I get here? And what are the things that happened along the way? And, and it's interesting, because one of the most significant crossroads was in 2006, and I was always a high school guy, I was, even when I was student teaching, I wanted to be a high school teacher. I had a K-12 cert, and I had a job offer to work at a high school in Delaware or to work at an elementary school in, in Pennsylvania, and, and believe it or not, I chose the elementary school, even though my heart was with high school, but it was just, that's where life took me for a number of different reasons. And, you know, when you think about those crossroads and you make those decisions, and then what trajectory that takes you on, I, I accepted my first teaching job at Chatham Park Elementary School in the school district of Havreford Township, and that's where I met my wife, Julie, who is just an inspiration for, for all that I do. As you know, Julie's also a teacher in the school district, and so she's tremendously helpful in helping me through seeing things through the teacher lens. I ask her all the time, like what is this, you know, how, how does this impact the teacher, what does this look like from a staff member's lens? But the bottom line, Julie, is that there is no way that I would, I would be sitting here, there's no way I'd be sitting at that desk without your support, and, and when I submitted my application for this job, it was, it was a family decision. It's, you know, if I'm applying for this job, it's a decision that we're making as a family, and so just can't thank you enough, Julie. And, and then my son, James, is here as well. James, James is a student in our district, I'm so proud of him, and, and my daughter, she's in sixth grade, so now she goes to the beach with friends. I'm like, what? But my kids are amazing, and, and it was really sweet actually, because when I told them that I was gonna be the principal of Unionville High School, they could not have been more excited that their dad was gonna be the principal. And it was just really sweet, and, and my daughter, she's in the theater, she asked me if I had to audition for the job, and so it was just a wonderful family moment. And so I always had this vision that I would be living and working in the same community, giving back to my community, and, and I had that when I was in Havreford. I was, I was living in that community and I was working there, and I was walking to school with, with my students, it was really neat, but I was always looking for more responsibility, and so something didn't feel quite right. And a couple moves later, I had an opportunity to come out here to Unionville Chad's Ford, and, and just so grateful for all the opportunities and all the people who've, who've supported all the ideas and initiatives along the way. And, and I was out here for four years, and I had all the responsibility that I was looking for, but I wasn't living in the community, I was commuting from Havertown, and so four years ago, we moved here. And ever since then, I just feel like, like I have it all, and, and I'm so grateful for, for everything that we have in this community. Thank you for your trust in me. You know, when thinking about, I'm, I'm working in district office, and, and I'm considering this, this new opportunity, and I think it really would have boiled down to is that I just miss the kids. And already, I've had an opportunity to meet with kids and talk with students, and, and instantly, it, it just reminded me of my why, and, and why I wanted to be back at the high school, and so it feels really, really good to be back there. Just a little bit about what I'm thinking about when, when it comes to the high school, I really do think that it's our collective responsibility to help all of our kids learn and grow. And when just thinking about where my priorities are, it's, it's really about making sure that it's a safe learning environment for our students, making sure that there's a culture of unconditional belonging, and that we're just inspiring our, our students through the teaching and learning that's going on. And, and as I wrote to the students, I said, once we're taking care of those three priorities, then we're also gonna have a lot of fun as well, and that's what I'm really looking forward to. The last comment I want to make is just to congratulate MB and Natalie. I swear, that, that day when we, when we came home after knowing that, that they were gonna be the assistant principals, I felt like we won the Super Bowl. You can ask Julie, I was so pumped up that night, and it's just gonna be an amazing team. We're gonna work really hard for our community, and, and I just want you to know that, that we got this, it's, it's gonna be great. So, thank you again for your trust in all of us, and we're looking forward to getting our staff and students back, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crater. Alright, and last but not least, certainly not least, is Ms. Natalie Carter, come on up. Okay, welcome Natalie. So, probably one of the, the things that, that I think about the most in this situation is I can't believe my kids aren't gonna have you as a teacher. For those of you that don't know, Ms. Carter is a beloved teacher at, at the high school. She has a way of, of presenting information to the kids that she's just, they just soak it up, but also she's just the person that she is, and she's such a wonderful person that the kids would do anything for her. You know, like I said, that, that was the, the bittersweet part of this was the idea that, oh gosh, there's gonna be not just my kids, but other kids that aren't gonna get to experience you in, in the classroom. But the cool thing here is now you have more responsibility, more impact, where you can bring that to the other teachers in the building and the other administrators across the district, and other families at a, at a larger scale. So I'm really excited for that. So Natalie, one of the things, I've always been struck, when I, when I've talked with Natalie, when I've been around Natalie, is her level of professionalism. She is, when I, I, the first thing I think of with her is professional and professionalism. She is always professional, always on point, but, you know, also light and also fun, and so it's, it's, I don't know how you combine those two things sometimes, but somehow she does it. Like this ultimate professional, but yet fun and lighthearted and kind, and I don't know how she does it, but probably why she's so beloved. So your professionalism really stood out through this whole process, always has with you, and, and also just one of the more, most intelligent people that I've ever been around. I just think that, you know, and, and you're very humble and very modest about your accomplishments, the full-time scholar, all those kind of things that you've been, you know, I, I think this is, it also speaks to your character. You know, just, just a great person of character, highly professional, beloved by our students and our families, and incredibly intelligent. And I think as a whole group here, of all these folks that are in new positions, the whole high school team now, I think, when you look at their skill sets and what they bring together, you can see how well they're gonna complement one another and play off of one another. So Natalie, thanks for accepting this challenge, I'm looking forward to what you're gonna bring to, to this new role, and what you, knowing what you've done in the past, I can't wait to see what you're gonna do in the future. So Natalie, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
There we go, okay. Um, thank you, truly, I am so humbled and grateful to be here. I applied to Unionville High School back in 2012 while I was in Japan. I had to apply over Skype, and yes, no one knows what happened to Skype anymore, but it was two to two-thirty in the morning was the interview block that I got, and I remember our department head, he only had one question for me in the interview, which was, what time is it there? And I told him, it's two-thirty in the morning, and he said, I don't have any more questions. You must want this job, and that has been true since day one. This is the place I have wanted to be. I have loved Unionville, it has been a home, like such a home to me away from home. Leaving the classroom was the biggest hurdle I had to think about all spring, because the students are what let me do amazing things. We have such a wonderful student body who want to learn, want to be there, are excited to try something new, like want to laugh, want to have fun and engage, so that was the biggest hurdle to leave the classroom. But we also have such a great staff, and I'm really excited to work with them and give back to them, and just get to see some of our other teachers, and hopefully help them grow their craft as well, and also just a fantastic administration that came before me. You mentioned the full-braid, Amy has gone along with every crazy travel idea that I have pitched her. She knew at least once every spring I'd come in and say, I found something, I need you to sign off on it, so. But they've also just been such an inspiration for me on just what great leadership looks like that lets both our students and our staff floor So, but they've also just been such an inspiration for me on just what great leadership looks like that lets both our students and our staff flourish. So I really want to thank you all for giving me the chance to serve and give back. Like I said, I'm truly humbled and honored to be here. So thank you all so much.
Well, I think the only people we haven't heard from is Julie and James back there. So I don't know. James, you got anything to say? All right. Don't want you on the spot, but thank you all so much for your service and your time. Other than Mr. Clark, unfortunately, Pat, you stay. This is the point in time where, or do you guys want to make some comments before? Okay, all right. I want to know the right answer when told. So I'm going to pause that and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Barata.
I think some of the board members would like to make some welcoming comments. I kept thinking, what words would I use to describe these people? And, and I was thinking, Pat, we, with your, with your guidance, we transitioned to the Longhorns. But I think for this administrative team, it's the workhorses. I think you guys are so committed and so hardworking. I know you're going to do an awesome job. It's, it's so impressive to me. I know we've talked about how we've really been able to promote people from within our district. And that's not been always the easiest decision to make in terms of wanting to bring in some new, new thought. But every interview we've sat in, it's our internal candidates have just knocked it out of the park. I mean, you, the administration has really prepared educational leaders. And, and so I'm really pleased that we were, we've been able to, to promote from within. So buckle up, it's going to be a busy school year, but I know you're up to the challenge. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I need a second. So at home in my room, I have, it's actually a post, a postcard, but I found it years and years ago and I have it framed. And I look at it every day with just this simple little quote and it says, the biggest thing in the world, bigger than the ocean and the sky, is your heart. And I was thinking about coming tonight and hoping you guys would all be here for this because I wasn't sure if you were going to be here. And Dr. Hoffman, you know, you introduced the concept of gratitude. And I, I actually, for me, I think you're ushering in the era of the heart, is what I think. I think that, you know, talk about Super Bowl teams that win the championships, and I'm going to shout out to UF because the NCAA men's championship. That team had somebody walking on from a club team, right? That wasn't the superstar number one recruits. They won from heart. We, you watch the, the men's NCAA every year. It's heart, right? It's heart that wins. So I think you are going to win the Super Bowl. And I just, I think we're so blessed. Mr. Crater, if, if Dr. Samville were here, he would back me up on this. I think I am your, I think I will claim that I am the original Pat Crater fan because I remember your final interview. You were a bit nervous if, if I'm being fair. And I just remember I listened to you and looked at you and heard what you were saying. And I thought, what he's saying he's going to do, that guy's going to do it because he's all heart. You are all heart. And I've made no, I haven't been shy about telling you I'm your big fan. And I've been lucky enough as a board member, but more as a parent, to have experienced directly Ms. Lyles and Ms. Carter with one of my children. And again, you guys are all heart. You are, you believe in these kids. I am so lucky to have seen that as a parent and I'm grateful for that. And you guys, the three of you are the trifecta. I mean, it, I'm so excited for, for this. And Mr. Clark, you know, Coach Clark, you know, you, again, inspiring these kids from the heart. We have a whole community of really intelligent people, all of our stakeholders, you know. We got big brains in this room, in this district, and that's great. But, you know, we have bigger hearts and I'm so excited for all of you. I just, I'm, I'm overwhelmed and we're really blessed. So good job.
I'd just like, like to, to congratulate again, Mr. Crater, Ms. Carter, Ms. Lyles, Mr. Clark. I'll also include, you know, Dr. Jenkins and Mr. Mr. Audard and Dr. Hoffman in there as, as we, as, as we move the dominoes back in the process. And having had the privilege of, of being in, I think, the interviews for each of, each of those, each of the positions, what continued to impress me was despite, despite Dr. Hoffman's mention of our, of our previous pension for, for poaching from, from Pendelco, that at every, that in each position, as, as Dr. Barata said, we had, we had incredibly strong internal and external candidates. And time after time after time, it was our people who, who, who were the cream of the crop. And that to me is incredibly impressive. And I think that speaks volumes about the leadership we've had, both in the district office and in, in each of the buildings in terms of how, how we've helped develop that talent and that, and that talent pool, such that we were in, in the position of, of being able to promote, actually this summer internally for pretty much every position other than, other than Patton, the middle school. And that's, that, that's very, very, very rare. And that just speaks to, to the dedication and of, of, of all our staff. And I'm, I feel, I feel very blessed and I'm, I'm very excited for, for, for the, for the future we have with, with all the changes in these positions. So congratulations to all of you.
Okay. Well, with that, Dr. Barata, that ends my first superintendent's report.
It's done. Congratulations. And now everyone is welcome to leave after you've heard our praise.
Except Mr. Clark.
You're welcome to stay as well, too, if you're, you're interested. Okay, up, up. Mr. Crater is leaving his Aunt Beth's cookies.
Put him in the wrong spot now.
All right. Good night. All right. Up next are, is the opportunity for community comments. If anyone in our community that would like to make public comment. Okay, moving on to school director comments in our usual order.
Thank you. Very briefly, it has been quite a summer here. I feel like we've done a lot of work, even though we supposedly had some time off, right? Just yesterday, it seems like we were celebrating a commencement. Here we are already with a new beginning. And I want to congratulate everybody on their new appointments. We have lots of familiar, very familiar faces, but in very unfamiliar spaces. I'm sure that, that will have a, a, a lot of challenges for everyone as we navigate this first few days of school. But I think we have the right team in place and I'm very confident. I, I could not be happier as a board member with the state of the union from a human resources standpoint. So congratulations to everybody on their new appointments. Look forward to working with all of you. And let's get started.
I have no further comments other than Dr. Hoffman could be jab on your first superintendent report.
Well, Ms. Anderson pretty much stole the thunder here, so I just couldn't follow up. I really am very thankful for, I think the one thing, it's very obvious is we are all a good team and we help each other. And there is no, there is support and love. And that's, I think that's what's going to make us all super successful. So I'm very, very, very grateful for that. The one thing I want to say, yes, this has been a really, really, the summer has been kind of crazy. Not just from this whole district point of view, but just the world point of view. I am very excited about, and I'm going to bring up this thing, that energy and AI. I don't know if you all heard, but Pennsylvania has been considered the state where there's going to be trans, transformation happening. There was a Pennsylvania Innovation, Energy and Innovation Conference where there's going to be a lot of funding coming to Pennsylvania to support energy sector that also supports the AI sector. And AI is a tool that is, we, whether we know it or not, it's transforming the world right now. This new wave that's coming, I don't even know what to compare it with. It's going to be tools, of course, but tools that's going to completely change the jobs. And one of the big sec, big changes that's coming is in the education sector. So as I was sitting in this conference, which I got invited to, I, I just couldn't help but wonder, what would our primary and secondary education and what would our college education look like in the next decade? And I think when you open your mind a little bit, you can start to see it won't look the same. So the past 50 years and the next 10 years are not going to look the same. And I'm very excited to bring new spaces through new facilities in middle school to talk about future of education because it's going to look different. And as we bring in the new teams to keep our minds open, to, to embrace AI and to see how that could actually truly create that individualized education system that I think we now have the power in our fingertips to start doing. So I'm super excited about it and this new team, being the open-minded team and the loving, the one with the heart, I think can truly make huge strides and I'm very excited about that. So welcome all of you and here comes the new challenge that I think we are all ready to get going on.
I unfortunately will not be, be able to attend our, our new teacher induction tomorrow morning, but I would like to, to extend a, an, an early, an early welcome to all of our, all of our new staff who are, who are coming on board in the next week or two. And along, you know, along the lines of all of our homegrown talent with, you know, within the district in, in our administrat, in our administration, I believe we also have some homegrown talent coming in tomorrow with some, with some alumni who are, who are now coming back as, as teachers and as, and as staff in the, in the district. And that's, that's not, that's, I think, been the trend over the last few years. We've had, we've had several, several alumni come back to, to, to teach in the district. And I think hopefully that is a trend which will, which will continue. So welcome teachers.
Tonight, we highlighted and honored the four most recent transitions into new leadership positions in the district. And congratulations to you guys. It's part of a, as Dr. Hoffman mentioned, a, a much broader period of change and transition. That's very exciting here and I look forward to seeing where this ship is, ends up sailing down the road.
First, I'd just like to thank everyone that worked all summer to get ready for the school year. We're not quite there yet, but we're, a lot of the work's happened. So whether it's 12-year employees, summer custodial, technology, all the administration, human resources with hiring, there's just been, I'm leaving people out, but there's been a ton of work done this summer and the buildings, we have a visitor here today who has commented on how beautiful our campuses, our, our campuses, our buildings are, and it's true. We look at them all the time and you get kind of used to it. But when you have frames of reference and places where you've been, it shows up differently to hear it from someone from outside. So that was nice to hear. So thank you to everyone. And then I just want to echo the congratulations. I know the, well, I'll just focus on the four people we're talking about tonight. I've worked with all of you and, and think you're the absolutely right people for the job. And I'm, I'm looking at Mr. Clark who's here as my new compatriot in student activities. I am so excited to work with you. I think you're the, the perfect person and we're going to do, you're going to do great things and I'll try to help you as much as I can.
Great. I have no further comments, so we will move on to routine business. Routine business will be discussed and voted on at next week's regular school board meeting. And we'll move to curriculum instruction and technology with Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Barata. Earlier today, we met and had the curriculum instruction and technology meeting. And I'm going to invite Dr. Jenkins up to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. So earlier today, we had the CIT meeting and I just want to review a couple of the, the first thing of the voting items. The first one is TeachTown, which is for our low incidence special education students in K to 12 for life skills and autistic support resources. So we discussed this back in June and the board has given us the okay to go ahead and schedule the professional development and then we'll ratify it next on Monday. So we thank you for that and it's a great resource that all of our students in special education will benefit from. Does anyone have any questions? The second voting item next week that you'll have from the CIT meeting is the English eighth grade novel. We had Honey Beth Crop here in June and she presented on the recommendation to replace iRobot with Fahrenheit 451 as the core text. And it's currently the core text in creative writing, and so we're making that change. And Ms. Crop presented about that in June and we will vote on it on Monday to approve it. Are there any questions? The next voting item that we have is the field trip list. So it's a list of potential places that our students in grades K through 12 can visit for field trips. There are a couple of changes to that. We removed the Brandywine Picnic Park because it is no longer in business. So that was removed from the list. And Camp Arrowhead and the Kennet Library were added to the list. And I think the Kennet Library has also been a great resource for us. So adding that will be a great opportunity for our students to attend. So that's where the potential list is for next, for the 25, 26 school year. No questions? The next one is extended school year. It's hard to believe that we're talking about extended school year in the summer of 2026, but that's where we are. It will be at the Cops in Elementary again. It will run June 22nd through July 30th and have off on July 2nd for the July 4th holiday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, 23 days total. So that will be at the Cops in Elementary. And then the last one is that we just gave a curriculum update. I shouldn't say just a curriculum update. It was pretty packed. We have lots of great things going on this year and planned. We have some professional development plans for three of our new programs that are going in. So our teachers will be hard at work and we will be there supporting them and bringing in trainers and working in the classrooms to make sure everything is implemented the way it should be. We discussed MTSS and furthering our tier one support systems for all of our students. And then also looking at tier two supports and linking that together with Linkit, which is our database that we have that will house all of our student data from like Keystone Testing to PSAT Testing to STAR Assessments and I-Ready Assessments and the foundations. And all that data that we collect will be used in Linkit. And then that will help us to further address MTSS and really make sure that we look at those areas and say, this is a curricular need, this is a student need, and then how can we fill those needs? Mr. Artibard talked about full day kindergarten and how excited we are that it will be here in less than two weeks and what that really means for outdoor play and our students and just how excited we all are K to 12 to bring full day kindergarten into it and, and to see those students walking in. We did talk about 2:30, they may be a little tired and the staff may be a little tired first couple of weeks, but we're definitely looking forward to welcoming all of our students. And then the last thing that we addressed was the curriculum cycle. And we really just outlined the process for the curriculum cycle, especially with me being new to the position of what does the year one curriculum look like? Year two, and where are we? And this year we have art, FCS, and social studies will be in year one. So I look forward to developing those curriculum teams and bringing people in to really analyze the curriculum and then say, these are some changes and make recommendations to the board. Any questions?
I picked up the, the stream this afternoon for the meeting, right as you were discussing full day kindergarten. And I just wanted clarification. We're at about 203 currently enrolled. Is, what was our expectation? What do we ultimately think that this cohort will be?
So we are, it was 203 as of last Thursday, Mr. Schartz. We're, we've had a couple more kids come in. They tend to still trickle in as we get close to the end of the, the start of the school year. As we're going into the school year, we're hoping for a number a little higher than that. 240 was something that we were considering. Last year, for a little comparison sake, we had 188 kindergarteners at the end of the school year. One thing we did talk about was when predicting class sizes for kinder, incoming kindergarten, we look at the live birth rate from five years ago. And the live birth rate, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dady, was actually at a low valley point for our district of somewhere in the 150s. So there is some data to indicate that this may be a valley year. There's always some ebbs and flow when it comes to our overall cohort. But our overall number of kindergarten registrants, I would expect that it will get up, my prediction at this point, 210, maybe even 215 by, in this school year. But over the next several years, I'm very curious to continue tracking our overall enrollment. Because while not quite up to that 240, my question is, is that an outlier or is that more of a typical standard?
Right. And I think picking up midstream, that, that was the question that was in my mind, which is that, that size cohort, does that- Does that tell us that there are still some kindergarten holdouts, even though we've introduced full day kindergarten? Or do we think we're getting the lion's share and it's just one of those years where not enough babies were created?
It's hard to say. I jumped into my response before acknowledging the end. That's wonderful. But in all honesty, it's truly hard to say. And unfortunately, I'm not sure we're going to be able to truly answer that until next year. Typically speaking, from kindergarten to first grade, we see a bump of kids in each of our elementary schools. Kids who maybe were doing something else for kindergarten, a private option or a full day option are moving in. If we still see that bump next year, then I would consider, alright, what was the hesitation? Why didn't those kids come to us? If we don't see that same bump, that would indicate a valley.
And so I'm just going to put something on your to-do list, which is if we do see the bump next year. Do we please do some interviewing to understand why, in spite of the introduction of the full day kindergarten program, we didn't get those kids enrolling in our department?
Absolutely, Mr. Schartz. And something we talked about at the meeting was the importance. And Ms. Talbert brought it up, the importance of gathering data qualitative and quantitative throughout the kindergarten experience. And I think that would be very valuable to get an idea of what were the decision-making factors? And if there's something else that we can do to make our program more appealing to families, make sure we're doing that. So. Absolutely noted. Thank you.
Yeah, we're excited to collect a lot of, as much data as we can on kindergarten, not just in enrollment patterns, but, you know, performance, et cetera. And with that cohort in general, right? Because we did make a promise to revisit pre-first and other kinds of issues, things along the path there. I would say there is one interesting data point. I don't know what it says, what it means. But I would say when you look at the overall enrollment and where students are enrolling. I thought it was interesting that I think UE has our highest enrollment versus Pecopsin. So I'm not sure what that tells us yet. I have thoughts and theories that aren't backed up by any kind of real data. But it's interesting, like first piece of data to wonder, right?
I will say, Dr. Hoffman, their neck and neck, Pecopsin has retaken the lead in terms of number kindergarten, but it is very close. That being said, it's been quite some time since Unionville Elementary and Pecopsin were similar. There was, there was a time in our district where they were very similarly sized schools and that's not been the case for the past several years. So, agreed. I'm very interested to see if that is, again, a blip or indications of a trend to come.
I just, maybe this isn't accurate, but my sense from just being on the committee that was thinking about and considering full day K is. We didn't want to underestimate the number of students coming, especially since facilities is such a key part of our ability to do the program. And has been, had been kind of previously a stumbling block. So my, my sense is that we probably overestimated like what would the number be? You know, what would a really high-end possible number, you know, reasonable but high-end number be? So that we didn't find that we don't have enough classrooms.
Absolutely, Dr. Brata. We, well, everything from in terms of space and materials, we wanted to be prepared for a large influx. And if that didn't come, be able to adjust accordingly.
And a lot of that was based on first grade numbers over the past five years and finding an average of that. And then assuming not everyone would come, because some people would still want the half-day experience for their children. Or they might want the private experience that their other siblings maybe had at some of our great local private kindergartens. So, so we thought two forty based on those numbers was a subtraction from that average. But I do, I do wonder about the live birth data. I also do wonder what enrollment trends are telling us.
I just wanted to make a quick point, Dr. Jenkins. I generally don't come to the CIT meeting, but I just wanted to tell you, I'm very excited that you're leading it. I've seen your creativity for the first time when COVID was going on and I am, I can't imagine how you're gonna bring that creativity into this new role. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I do have to smile. I don't know how many of you picked up on everyone smiling when Mr. Crater said he was sitting at the principal desk. It had nothing to do, it just, it has to do with the fact that I got a new desk as principal, that you pushed the button and it was a standing desk or sitting desk. And I loved it. And it's still up there and he keeps making fun of me. So that's why he said, sitting at the principal desk, like he's up making fun of me that his desk, he has my desk. It's okay. I'm dealing with it.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I'll pause to see if anybody has any further comments. And also to invite Mr. Webb. We have no voting items this month in technology. But Mr. Webb, I'm gonna invite you up to update us on technology and of the CIT meeting.
Yeah, we've been busy. As I was talking about C I N T, we kind of focused on really some key areas of the enhancements, the upgrades, which is important. Our five-year, you know, technology, our technology plan, which indicates our, you know, how we age our devices appropriately. We've done a great job over the years to ensure that and every year we kind of keep our numbers steady with that. So we did a lot of that work. We're able to rip and replace. Prepping devices, of course, and this is where student interns came into play. And I'll have Lincoln speak in September regarding, because he was a part of that program with a couple of other ones. So that's gonna be fun to hear that. We were onboarding our staff. We're also onboarding our student teachers, which start right away, right? Got those going on as well. And we, a couple of years ago, we worked on changing the way that looked and I think it was very successful. Everything's digital, so they all get a laptop. They all get to sign our forms and they all get logins and stuff like that. A very successful program. So we're getting those, those folks ready. We did our, all of our course, we closed out our systems for the year. We opened up our new systems for the year coming up here. Again, a very busy summer for us. And believe it or not, we start planning for the fall, because if things don't stop, we keep going, keep going through. But right now, we're welcoming our new teachers tomorrow with our mentors. We're gonna make sure they're set up. We're gonna meet with them tomorrow for several hours, giving them their new devices, which they'll be very excited about. And getting our spiel, which we talk about cybersecurity phishing. We talk about Power School, Canvas, Google Classroom, Class, all the cool ed tech tools, you know, how to get help, all that good stuff. A very welcoming environment, a way they can kind of connect with our technology staff. Full day K, we're wrapping up our classroom setups. I mean, Mr. Weitzel did the work. We, and he's helping us get those smartphones installed and the rest of the equipment. Getting our ed tech ready to go. Outdoor network is installed for our safety and security reasons. And if they would like to take the occasional iPad, a look at a flower or two and see what that says, that'd be fun. Or maybe just go on a tree and do some work. And then our student intern update, I will provide that in September. That's all. Ms. Anderson, any questions or? Thank you all.
Mr. Webb, thank you and your team. You have reminded us in the past and I will remind everyone that while the kids are home and the teachers are home for the summer. You guys are doing a ton of work. So thank you for all of that and continued good work. And with that, Dr. Brata, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Moving on to policy with Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Dr. Brata. I would like to invite Dr. Ryder up to discuss policy. While she arrives this month, we do have five policies, six administrative guidelines and one survey for approval at next month's, sorry, next week's board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I will dive right into the policy report. In section five point one, our policy on bullying and cyberbullying, policy two forty-nine, there have been no changes since the board last saw this. In section five point two, our eight oh one public records policy in AG, there have been no changes since the board saw these last month. Mr. Allen, how would you like to handle the next section? Would you like me?
Sure, you can start and I'll.
Okay, perfect. So the board saw policy eight fifteen point one last month. There have been no changes. But there's certainly been conversation around this particular policy and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Allen to engage with us on the next steps.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Ryder. After, after just having numerous discussions with, with some of our district parents who had, who have concerns regarding policy eight fifteen point one. I think that their, the concerns broadly fall into two categories. One is a matter of actual policy, which is what, which is what we discuss here as a board. And other parts are procedure, which fall either under administrative guidelines, which are administered by the administration. And are, and which is really, procedure is how it gets done. So as a board, our responsibility is determining policy of what, what we think should be done. And then we then leave it up to the administration to, to determine how that is, how that is best, best executed through administrative guidelines. Or even through less codified practices and best practices. With, with that in mind, we've already seen some, some changes come with the beginning of both the school year. In terms of giving parents who wanted to opt out of their students being, appearing on district social media. There is now an option with, to use the existing FERPA notice to opt out of social media, but to also, but to still continue to appear in the yearbook. Which is, which is, which was a request. Going, and there is also, I believe that the administration is also working on using, turning that form into some type of digital form. Whether it's similar to DocuSign, such that that can be done online as opposed to printing a hard copy. And then returning the hard copy to the, to the individual school's office in order to make that a more seamless process for those who choose to opt out. The one additional change that I would, that I would recommend to my colleagues is that as we look at the existing policy. Existing policy eight fifteen point one does mention under the, on page two, under the photos, videos and live streams of students. It does mention that, that the district may post photographs, videos and live streams. Unless the student's parents guardians have opted the student out of FERPA's directory sharing, information sharing. And then, or if parents guardians have declined to sign the district's media release form. Now, the aforementioned district media release form has never actually existed in practice, which is why the current recommendation is to strike that portion of the policy. However, I would recommend that we actually maintain that and that we create the media release form. And use that as the opt-out form and decouple opting out of social media from the FERPA notice. FERPA is a federally required and protected form. So I think that using a different dedicated social media release form will. While using the FERPA notice is legally acceptable, I think that if we decouple the social media release from FERPA. It will, it will provide further privacy protections for, for our district families who wish, who do wish to opt out. So, given that we do not currently have a district media release form. My current suggestion would be that at next week's, at next week's board meeting, that we table eight fifteen one. And then bring it back as soon as practicable with, after the actual social media release form has been developed by administration. And we can bring it back at second reading in order to expedite it. In the meantime, we would still be able to use the existing FERPA notice that has gone out with those opt-outs. Because it is currently set up as an administrative guideline. Since administrative guidelines do not require board approval, it is, it is perfectly acceptable for us in this circumstance to use it per our policy. And then once that social media form has been created, we would then be able to move forward, approve that policy. And then that would sunset the existing FERPA form, which has the opt-outs. I'd like to throw this open to discussion to see, to get the rest of my thoughts. I will mention that it's board policy triple zero, which, which refers to the board policy procedures and administrative guidelines. And that's where it does state that administrative guidelines are not part of board policy and may be altered by the administration without board action. Administrative guidelines may not conflict with board policy or with applicable law. And while it is, while they can be modified without board approval, it has been our longstanding best practice for the board to approve administrative guidelines. I suggest we continue that as our best practice. But in, in circumstances where we need to move expeditiously, the administration within administrative guideline can move, can move preemptively before, prior to board approval. So I'll open up the comments and questions.
I think what you're saying I resonate with. I just want to clarify. So in essence, is, am I understanding it if you're saying it would be that parents would need to opt in as opposed to opting out? No, so.
It would still be opting out, but it would use a dedicated opt-out form as opposed to using the FERPA notice topped out. So it would just, so it would still be opt out, but it would just be using, it would not be opting out through the.
So it would draw, in essence, in your proposal, it would draw its own attention to that. Making it more likely that we wouldn't miss anybody that would want to opt out. Okay, that's what I'm thinking. Yes, I, that resonates with me. I think that's a very more authentic way to go.
So as this dialogue is going on, I'm kind of stepping back and saying. You know, yes, a few parents want to opt out, but maybe a bigger question that I have is what's driving those few parents to opt out? And this whole question of privacy. And with the facial recognition and all the technology that's going forward, is it a bigger question for us? You know, it's not just a few parents, but is there a bigger school district-wide question for us that we, we need to discuss? I'm just throwing that out. I don't have any opinions one way or the other, but I'm just kind of throwing it out like. What are the other school districts doing? What are the, what is the education sector? Is there any laws coming out? Is there a bigger question to discuss here? Because sometimes what happens is a few aware parents are asking a question. But it's in our, we, we need to look at even those parents who may not be super aware of it. But if it's causing an issue down the road, maybe we need to address it now with those few aware parents. So I'm just raising that as a question.
Dr. Aki, I think you, I think you might have hit the nail on the head for where my thoughts are. Is it's come, it's come forward from a couple of parents who were felt strongly and are on the leading edge of knowledge and concern. And came, have been coming to us. But I think some of us, I put myself in this bucket, just hadn't really kind of thought through potentially all of the moving pieces. As, as the, it's kind of the double storm of as social media has proliferated in lots of forms in different ways. And now AI kind of entering this, we'll just call it like a toxic swirl. And yet, the importance of these platforms for community building and communication. We're on these platforms because so many of our parents go there for information. Otherwise, we wouldn't maintain it and do it. And so how do we ensure, what did I write? How do we have it still build community by minimizing the risk of misuse for our, our population? And so I think it is like, it's a philosophical, or what type of strategy do we want to have? And we've been having kind of rich content and rewarding content and interesting content. And do we want to kind of continue on the same way? So that's, that's aside from the policy, but it's kind of the question that this asks. And also slightly aside from policy, things that we want to continue to commit to our community through policy or administrative guidelines is that we're clear and transparent about what we're doing. So in this case, social media. What is the social media we use? Why do we use it? What can you expect from us? What's kind of the contract that we're all in together? Can we have a well-communicated, easy-to-use way if that's not right for you, as we do for quite a number of other things that we do? But it has to also be maintainable as a large public school district. We have to also live in reality with that. We, you know, we can't do one of everything for everybody. But I think this idea that Mr. Allen proposes of a separate social media opt-out actually provides an opportunity to do more nuance. So maybe you're actually don't want to be on social media, but you're fine being on the walls of Unionville inside our buildings. And that's a different sort of thing than social media. Maybe there's, there's other ways to slice and dice the ways that you're having, you're comfortable having your students be in the ecosystem or in the community, but not other ways. So we could just be more nuanced if it was a separate form versus right now, it's kind of your book and everything else. And it's, and again, it's FERPA form, which really had a different kind of purpose. And then the other piece is just continued training in the community. As we mentioned, making sure that our teachers, anyone who's kind of either receiving these forms or even being made, we talked about opportunities for more PD. Maybe this is a PD topic about like new risks that we are, you know, seeing, things that are happening. And this is all just breaking now, right? Deep fakes with people's real faces, making, you know, I've seen them. And I, you think they're real and you look it up and they're not real and you have to take such a critical eye. Are, is there PD or increased training for the adults that are using every coach that has a page, a band director? Right? We have so many and they're full of content interesting, but they also are available to other people. So I think, I think you make an interesting proposal. The other, the one thought I'd have, Jody, that could be different is we go with this form for this year because it already got rolled out. The, right? The email went out. So I don't know. I would just say we could send that out and then continue to work and improve for some matter of months and do better with the next form. So I, I don't have a strong opinion, but just another idea. Thank you.
So, Ms. Talbert, that's exactly what I'm proposing would be that if we, if we table, if we table the policy eight fifteen one next week at the board meeting. Like that then allows us time to, to have the continued conversation, to develop that, that social media, that opt-out form. To, and to refine the language of it in order to. To have the continued conversation to develop that that social media, that opt out form to to and to refine the language of it in order to. To define those parameters. In the meantime, the existing, you know, the existing FERPA notice with the opt outs for social media or for social media opt out, but allowing to stay in the yearbook would still be in effect. So that so rather than approving the exist the policy as it's as it's exists now, you know, as as with the. Current, you know, proposed changes and then revisiting this five months from now and going all the way through, you know, first, second, repeating approval again. That's why I recommend we can we with the administrative guideline in place currently with the FERPA notice. That that is currently the way to opt out this, you know, right now. We could then table this, refine that form, bring this back at second reading so that we're not so we're not kicking the can down the road another eight months. So that way, for the going forward, you know, the start of next school year, we will have we have the new procedure in place.
I'm sorry, I'm confused now. So. So the proposal would be to amend policy eight fifteen. Point one effective for the twenty six twenty seven school year and live with the current policy?
No, so the the proposal would be to would be to table the to table the policy. Current and next week, so to table the policy for the moment. While we while that's tabled, the the existing administrative guideline, which is the FERPA noticed with the current with the opt outs. Will be in effect because they already went into effect two weeks ago, you know, with with the changes made by the administration in order in order to facilitate. You know, enrollment for the upcoming school for the current school year. Once we have, once we have the social, once the social media opt out form is. Is produced, we can then bring this back at second reading and then once we've then approved that new policy, that would then immediately sunset the FERPA with the. With the with the current changes and it would it would bring that new that new social media opt out form into effect. So whether that's, you know, two months from now or, you know, three months in the very near future, my my point would be to do that as soon as as soon as practicable. And or so that we're not so that we're not going on existing with going on with the current policy until the beginning, you know, until another year. Or any any longer than than need be.
So we're. We're tabling so that we can change the form as opposed to wanting to change the policy that we've written. Why do why would we not go ahead and approve the policy? And then when we add the add the form, because the I don't want to create a hole if we have a better policy, but let's pass that next week. And make that the policy and revisit the administrative guideline later when we have the form ready. That feels like the more prudent.
Cause the.
Course of action.
Cause the policy says there is a social media form and that does not exist right now. So we'd proving a policy knowing that there was a piece in it that was inaccurate.
No.
It could say or.
That that would be my preference is to 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 pass the policy. That designates a form which we do have, it's just not the form that we prefer to have. Let's let's rework the form and come back and change the administrative guideline to reflect the updated form when that's ready.
So Dr. Hoffman, I have a. Suggestion, and I don't know if this is a good one or not, but just some throwing something out, but just like you have the safe schools, we have the safe schools. Tabletop exercise. I've never been part of it, but I know you all have been doing these exercises. Could there be a safe schools tabletop exercise for social media? Like what could go wrong? Like so many things could go wrong. Could we do like do a. A tabletop exercise that examines that a little bit and then. So that we'll do whatever we need to do right now with eight one five. That's fine, but I'm just kind of looking for a bit more strategic. Heart process here and, you know, I know I love AI, but I also hate AI. So like, how how do we know the part that we want to hate? Like, is there a way? Is, you know, I know digital pictures are so good now. Is there a way to to reduce that digitization to so that it can't be tracked? Like, could there be like a more strategic way of, you know, looking at this? Where we are protecting our kids for the long run and also being able to go out to the community and how what's the best way to go about it?
Yeah, well, thanks for the opportunity, Dr. Key. I do think that there's there's some things we can do. You know, one of the things when we when we get to the part where we talk about our district goals. You know, what we're really talking about is communication, right? Because this, you know, social media is a way that people communicate. And part of the goals that we're bringing forward is the idea of an audit of of our communications. Really looking at, you know, what are the best practices when it comes to social media? Social media use in addition to any other types of communication, right? It could be that, you know, how do we reach our residents that know better that aren't? You know, don't have students in our district, right? There could be and maybe social media is a strategy, maybe it's a different strategy. But I think one of the things that when you think about commonalities, what's the common thread, right? As opposed to things that's. So what are the what are the what are the. Communication strategies, best practices for those types of strategies currently, right? And how do we look at our communications strategically overall? And enhance our communications, right? Whether it's making them more safe, whether it's making them, you know, more visible, whatever is visible, more visible and more safe, right? In some way, shape or form. So I I think that, you know, in work working with Ms. LaRoya, that that's something we've talked about that we would like to do this year is one of our. One of our actions on their communications is to do an audit. Which we obviously would have a social media component to 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 everything that we bring forward. And so so I've been hearing your thoughts and Ms. Talbert's thoughts. I think that's a nice way to to start to understand how all these things fit together and and what is what are the best practices out there? And what should we be thinking about?
I appreciate Dr. Key bringing it up under the guise of, you know, talking about safety and security and I. I imagine, and I don't want to put Mr. Webb on the spot, but I imagine that there will be, if not already in development. People vying to build technologies that apps that then are like shields that are like scramblers, et cetera. Is that fair to say of digital? I mean, we're not there yet, but I I imagine that's gotta be people working on that too, right?
Cor- correct, yeah. And we're seeing that type of level of technology, even our filtering, right? We can detect and blur images and things like that. So that that stuff is starting to exist and we can look into what exists out there for us. We can at least.
Yeah, one of the things too, that's this, you know, passing the policy that we're talking about is is a more protective step, right? So like to Mr. Schard's point, like this is like this get this move something more protective forward, right? And in essence, then we can go back and look at the the administrative guideline and such and and make those adjustments. So as 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 you've all talked about, then I do think that's a that's a prudent path.
Yeah, along those lines, I I mean, I feel like we're spitballing a little bit here on on the. The procedure that we want to follow as a board, but I I want to make sure that we're. We've got buy in from administration on the path that that we're spitballing here tonight. Thank you.
Again, and 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 Mr. Schard's, to to your point, it's well, once we get, once we get down to the to the granular level of procedure, that move that moves outside of our purview of. Our board preview of policy and that moves then into into the administration's purview of of practice in terms of how they have the implement. You know, the the policy that we're looking for. So it sounds so after our discussion, it sounds like what what. What what we'd like to do for next week then would be to to keep to to vote on to vote on the policy. But modifying the current recommended language so we we keep in the portion under photos and videos of live stream of students. Which mentions parents guardians, you know, signing a district media release form, so language, so we'll keep that in there and then. And then, but to your point, leave it. Open enough, but that's just saying that it's the district, it's the district, you know, media release form and then and then that and then we can then. Which will currently is the FERPA notice, which is the administrative guideline. And then as we develop, as the administration develops a new separate media release form, it would just be a matter of updating the administrative guideline and not not the policy itself. Is that just want to make sure we're, I think that's where we've all landed. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you all for the discussion. I appreciate it. On eight fifteen point one. Dr. Ritter, back to you.
Sure. So just to sort of recap for the board and the community currently attached to board docs, there have been no changes to policy eight fifteen. Or the AG associated with it. Next week, there will be a minor change within the policy specifically around the current strike through of the media release form. With just a more general statement there, and then there will be the opportunity to vote on both the. Policy and the AG and then future work around the AG, which will be a potential shift. And a decoupling of the form for an opt out form that is a standalone. Is that an accurate summarization of the conversation? Perfect.
With with only the appendage that I I would hope that per our usual practice that. When the form is ready, it comes back to the board for a vote at administrative guideline.
It will be an administrative guideline that we bring forward. That is correct, Mr. Schartz, but thank you for that certification.
I'll tag on like I think if we do this, do the audit and the review that we might want to make changes to our social media policy. But we can bring it up again and add those at that point, but we've got an intact policy that's going to work for us until we know kind of where we want to go.
So it's not our normal process, but there will be slight changes between the work session and the approval month for this, and I'll make sure they're highlighted for Mr. Allen next week to share or I can come back up. All right, moving forward in item five point four, this is the nine fifteen section around booster clubs, parent organizations and approved charitable organizations. All three of these documents remain unchanged. And again, as a reminder to our community, it was June. That we really did second reading because in July, there's not a lot of policy work that occurs. So currently, there are no changes to any of the things the board saw in June, minor change coming to the eight fifteen series. All right, moving us forward to some new items in section five point five, we have three policies and AGs up for review approval. Again, these are that things that are new this month, but we anticipate or are recommending that they are just up for one month so that they would be up for approval next week. We have policy zero zero seven AG zero. This is really just to sort of retitle when we were working in the one twenty sixes. We renumbered our AGs. We didn't used to use zero in the series. We used to use sort of a one, two, three, but then we removed things and now we need to add a zero. So there's not really any change to content other than the numbering, but it does get a little confusing. So if you need me to review it. But in essence, this used to be AG two and now it's AG zero, but no other meaningful content changes. Moving on to the two items in the one oh three point two section of our policy book. This is changes related to Title Nine, but really only related to the change in which Pat is doing something related to Title Nine. So we are moving from Pat Crater, as we talked about earlier tonight, he is now the high school principal. And Pat Clark is now taking on the Title Nine responsibilities. We did also catch that because of some of those changes, the correct address and contact information also needed to be revised. So again, nothing from a process or procedure other than the correct entity in the land of Pat C. It is now Clark, not Crater. And those are the three that are up for review and approval next week. Moving down into five point six. This is not a section that is in all of our policy agenda meetings, but it is when we have a survey up for review and approval. You may recall that at the June CIT meeting, Dr. Jenkins, in her role as high school principal at that point, along with Annie Davis, our college and career counselor. Talked to us a little bit around information of in a Naviance survey. As a reminder to our board and our community, Naviance is a program that really just helps to inform, manage and monitor. And monitor the college and career process specifically at our high school. So there is information that students enter into the system that helps to guide them through next steps as they explore what they may do once they leave Unionville High School. One of those things is a survey and because it is a survey, this one in particular is targeting our graduating seniors. And by gathering this information, it will provide scattergrams. We've seen those in in other meetings that really talk about. Particular colleges and universities and outcomes for Unionville High School students. So we feel that this is critical information that will help our students achieve better outcomes or just be more informed about the outcomes they are seeking. This is a survey that we provided complete input on and feel comfortable with administering it to our students. But we are bringing forward it for board review and approval to be able to administer to our students in just a few short weeks as they start their senior year. All right, there's no questions on that. Like to move to section five point seven, our policy's up for second reading. My favorite policy, service animals in schools. There haven't been any changes. There have not been any animals added outside of miniature horses and therapy dogs at this point, so nothing for me to comment on, but it is there for second reading if anyone would like to take a look at it. Oh, I see Dr. Barata.
You know, I'm reading about the mini horse. I I did I did go in that deep dive that you mentioned, but no, it just. There seems to, could we pull it up for a second? There seemed to be. Discrepancy between, there's a section that says what you can't ask. And then there's a section about specifically about the mini horses. And it seems like it's asking a question that earlier we said we can't ask. So I think one of the questions was about the training that we can't ask. So maybe go down, go earlier in the policy about the section where we can't ask the question. Or is it later? Yeah, request documentation regarding training of the service animal. And request a demonstration of the animal's ability, just the animal's abilities. And then the district shall consider the following factors. Right now, that's not it. Keep going. Whether the handler has sufficient control of the mini horse, whether the miniature horse is housebroken, that seems like it's a little bit in.
I can certainly go back. We're a little out of my realm of experience here, given that we don't have any mini horses, but I certainly see that there may need some clarity. I I can do a deeper dive and see if we are considering, I I certainly recognize that housebreaking an animal is generally considered a a part of training. I don't know that was the intent behind the language, but let me retreat with that and see if we can make some changes.
Yeah, we don't have to come up with answers now, but just I just in my reading, they felt like they were. In conflict.
I I think the section Dr. Barata says reasonable modification considerations. So I think. It's allowing for exceptions to the above stated rule if I'm reading it correctly. That's the way I interpreted when I read it.
Okay.
But we should clarify.
Yeah, just just to want to make sure that we're not. I could be wrong, but I'm just bringing that to attention.
Well, I will retreat and have continued conversations about miniature horses and their training with the administrative team and bring back any recommendations as we move forward in September for hopefully approval. And maybe, you know, a miniature horse, who knows?
In our future demonstration. Thank you.
Sure. If there aren't any other questions about our service animals and therapy animals and the like, if we could move into five point eight, these are the new. Policies up for first reading. There is a longer list here. Many of them are part of the six twenty six. There's one that is in the eight twenty sevens, but all of these are really tied to changes. In the uniform administrative sort of guidelines related to federal awards and funding. So we don't have a lot of wiggle room on this. I would really lean on Mr. Dady if we have technical questions. But essentially, there have been changes in the the code that governs all of these components of federal fiscal compliance. They are required for the board to have them enacted as part of our audit and to maintain the ability for us to continue to receive federal funds if and when they are released to us. And so it's important that we have all of these as noted. One thing that I want to make mention of, we did not used to have AGs per se in six twenty six. We had attachments, so they were in essence sort of listed at the bottom of six twenty six if you were opening our policy book. We have made a strategic move over the past few years to pull anything that was in essence an attachment out. And listed as an AG for a variety of reasons, but one of them really being clarity and transparency and ease of use of our policy book. So while not new in the general sense, we are putting them through that three month review cycle to keep them bundled together. But they are now looking like a new AG, but they were in essence an attachment to this policy in the past, if that makes sense. And then eight twenty seven, the conflict of interest policy is also moving forward for the same reason. It's all tied to the changes in. The uniform administrative guidance related to federal awards. So all of the changes are based on the ability to accept and correctly utilize federal funds. Once they are awarded. Mr. Dady, am I missing anything?
Well, I'll ask the question of Mr. Dady that I asked when I met with him last week. Looking at these policies, just for the benefit of my board colleagues and the public, there's really no change in our actual practice. We're just. Codifying our policy to conform with the law.
Yes, there's no changes in our practice. This is really just so that we're in compliance with the uniform grant guidance and we can continue to be awarded and accept federal funds.
Yeah, when we submit, when we submit grant applications, they ask us to ensure that these things are in place, right? And conform to their standards. So this is just updating it so that we can have those procedures and processes and check yes on on this.
All right, and seeing no questions, I'll move us into five point nine, which are the district goals. And I'm going to hand that over to Mr. Audovar to lead us through that part of tonight's conversation.
Thank you, Dr. Ryder. So district goals, I have to pay homage for a moment. If Dr. Sandville were here, this is where he'd say, this is my fifteenth year as superintendent and we've done goals fifteen different ways. Um, it just doesn't feel right going through the process without uh, hearing those words come out. Uh, but yes, to uh, honor his legacy, we are looking at our goals in a slightly different way, not drastically different in the past. But I want to go back to what Dr. Hoffman was sharing earlier about our district's values and how really at its core, we have identified what are our values? What is at the core of our why of why we exist, of why we do what we do? Educational excellence, that superior educational environment, people centered cu- culture, and of course, principled stewardship. So as our administrative team began to work on our goals, and if possible, Judy, could you pick on that? Thank you so much. We wanted to really start with what is so critical to us and what is most critical to us? Our mission, our vision, our portraits, and then our values. So as uh, if you scroll down a bit, Judy, thank you so much, and you can keep going. We really broke our our goal recommendations and goal drafts uh, down according to our values. So looking at educational excellence, so what are those areas that we'd want to focus upon? And two initiatives, one being academic achievement, the other being supports for students. So under academic achievement, where are we going to focus our energies? I believe firmly in exceptional fundamentals within innovative ideas coming off of that. So when it comes to academic fundamentals, we know we're always going to focus on early literacy and making sure our kids are reading a benchmark by third grade. We're going to focus on algebra and one readiness and that college and career readiness for our older kids who are nearing or in high school and nearing the end of their time in Unionville Chad's Ford. When it comes to supports for students, we're going to look at our MTSS, the multi-tiered system of supports. What are we doing so that every kid can be successful? And if a kid is struggling, what are we doing to find it, catch it, build a plan and help them to be successful? And then in the special education world, special education and gifted services, what, how are we looking at our programs and processes there? So going through each of our value areas in that way, superior education of our environment, what does that look like in terms of climate and then student experience, both curriculum wise and extracurricular wise? Uh, people centered culture, everything from professional development and wellness. How do we support the wellness and the growth of our people? Um, and then human resources processes, making sure we have strong, fair and equitable um, agree employment agreements, making sure we are holding the highest level of professionalism standards for our educators in Unionville Chad's Ford. And then when it comes to principled stewardship, everything from fiscal responsibility to future readiness, sustainability and technology uh, and communication and um, what we want to do in those areas. So what we have here is a collection of action steps, all targeted towards moving forward to these overall values. And essentially our values define our goals. So that's where we want to go and that's where we want to be. And these are the areas that we see as opportunities where we can move forward in um, in our work to achieve and make sure these values are in place in our district. There's a couple just things to point out for each area. There's a certain action steps, indicators of progress to see how we're moving along the way and a measure of success. What does success towards this initiative look like? We also, something slightly different in the past, uh, I articulated a point person. So who is kind of the, the actual lead person, lead administrator for this initiative? And then who are the administrative support teams behind that? Now you'll notice we didn't get to the point of listing specific teachers or departments piece, knowing that there's not a single thing up there that we're not going to do without our teachers, without our support staff, but just talking about that sort of leadership team uh, to work along the way. Each of the action steps, it's a combination of some can work that is continued from the past and new work. So for example, um, full day kindergarten, monitoring the implementation of full day kindergarten, of course, is a continuation of work from the past. Uh, early literacy and algebra readiness continues to be a priority. Data systems and Lincoln, uh, Dr. Jenkins spoke about that earlier, making sure we're using our tools as efficiently and effectively as possible. Uh, personal electronic devices, policy two eighteen. This is all work that has existed in the past that we're looking to continue on and move forward. There's also new work here, um, ideas about professional development for our support staff and building out systems to maximize our people there. Employee agreements for our support staff in Act ninety three are up this year, so that's going to be important work for us. Um, looking at our human resources systems and tools as well as a communications audit that uh, was discussed earlier related to um, social media, but just in general. So what we have here is a collection of initiatives that we feel really good about and will feel will really frankly move the needle in our district and help move us forward. Um, so I want to pause there. I also recognize that um, the board didn't have these goals as far ahead as typical typically we do um, going into a work session. So I completely understand that um, conversation may be um, limited at this point. We are hoping to have goals ready and plan to bring them forward in September. So this would be for a September voting item, uh, but we wanted to get them out to everyone now. So I would encourage, I want to pause and if there's any thoughts or questions from the board, I can certainly feel those. But I also would would encourage the board, if there's any thoughts and questions after the meeting, as you've had a chance to dive in in greater detail, to please reach out um, so that we can then bring forward more information either at next week's board meeting or at the work session in September. So with that, I'll pause.
Couple comments, I love the alignment to values. I I'm excited, Dr. Hoffman, that you want to use the values more. I think that working with portrait of an educator, portrait of a graduate, but they still sit under like, there's so much more in the values that about like the everyday and what everyone does. So I'm excited to see those make a make a comeback. Because I think that that's really a lot of what we do. I love that seen a point person in addition to a list of names, because that's like the accountable person. So I like that a lot. I haven't had a lot of time to fully um, ingest, but I see a lot of things that I was expecting to see. So that's probably a good sign, like things we've either been talking about or we know or something that we want to really focus on. And maybe I'll just save other questions for like a question for you or something at this point, but but I'm excited to to dig into them.
Absolutely, thank you, Ms. Talbert.
And notably missing are the Yelp review dollar signs and box. Which I still kind of like, but.
So when I think about goals. And I always, I think this is the comment that I make every year, that it looks like a laundry list. And I I'm I'm not saying it in a negative way, but when I think of goals, we have to pick a few for the year. And somehow we end up doing this every year there. It's just a lot in each person. It's almost like defining each administrator's role. That's what it appears to me like, you know, in a consolidated format. Is that what we want to do? Is that what you got wanted to be? If that's what you want to be, then that's great. But is that, is that what you wanted it to be?
It's funny, we we've talked about this, um, well, that's probably why we've had a lot of different versions of the goals, right? Over the years, but I will say a couple of things. One, um, it does represent the work of twenty seven different individuals, right? So so if you think about it that way too, this is, these are things that individual administrators are looking at about their programs or about what their, what their, what their directors of or what their supervisors of. And things that they want to do to kind of move the needle in their, in their area. And it's just happens to be represented in the same document, right? And so it's, it's all collectively there. Um, not every one of our administrators is working on every one of these, these tasks, right? The other thing to think about too is when you're leaning into these, these goals and how are we moving our, our values of our, how are we living the values of our organization? It's almost, we've talked about it too, that the idea is, are these really, should we really call them goals? Are these just, are these the things that we're doing to to move the needle and and to further our district values, right? So um, so in my mind, I I'm trying not to get caught up in the word goals or not goals. I'm more thinking about, when I see the size of it, I'm thinking that we're representing the work of a lot of different people. So that's one reason why they might be a little larger. Uh, you know, when you think about goals, like we have a couple of measurables that we're going to hit, right? When I think about different goals we might do for an organization or a business or whatever it might be. I think this is a way of showcasing the work that we're trying to do to move our values forward, right? And so maybe the word goals is the, is the trip up a little bit, maybe the size of it is because it's representing a lot of really good work that people are trying to do and not everybody is responsible for all the goals, right? So I guess overall, I hear your, I I hear it because I think we we struggle with the same thing, like goals, is this a goal? What makes it, you know, is it, you know, a lot of the things, what makes the goals list really? When you think about it is, what are the things we're doing to move our values forward? Right, and so and I think that's what, because there's work up here that we got, there's a lot of work up here that we're going to do is that's not on the list, right? So our FID day application, we can talk about that at some point, you know, things like if you do a comprehensive plan, that would make the goal, it's just work that we have to do, right? It's just part of the cadence of the job. You know, versus, you know, what are we going to do individually and collectively to move our values forward? So I don't know if that's a good answer for you, but I we totally, I totally hear what you're saying. We do struggle with the term goals. They should call it board goals, remember it's called board goals and the board was like, well, we're really part of developing them. So why is it called board goals? So um, you know, so that that's toward where we are. This is what we're trying to to move forward in a way to say, we're going to be a values driven organization. We're gonna, we're gonna have our values and we're gonna, we're gonna put forward the things that we feel like are going to uh, move our organization and our values forward and that'll be what this is. Whatever we decide to call it, I guess in the end, whether it's goals or not goals, but that's, that's just a long winded answer. I'll stop now.
One other thought, Dr. Key. So as I think about the process for coming up with each of these action steps, um, we did that collectively as part of our administrative retreat just last week and normally we may start a little earlier, but our team wasn't complete until very recently. So we first, I guess goal number one was let's get all the right people in the right seats and then build from there. But was particularly interesting is as we broke off into teams to develop, believe it or not, this is the pared down list from where we started. It was, I'm embarrassed to say how many were on there initially, but I think that also shows the big ideas and the ambition of the group. But another thing that struck me and we had a similar conversation as our central cabinet team this morning about the goals. Is goals even the right word for this? It may not be, and I hadn't really consciously done that, but even as we were making the chart that was, that is projected up there, after the title where it says UCFSD goals twenty five, twenty six, the word goals isn't used in the whole document. And I don't think that was an accident. In essence, I think almost we're implying that we have four goals for the school year. And those four goals are educational excellence, principled stewardship, superior educational environment and people centered culture. And everything else is, all right, what are we going to do to forward those four perpetual goals? Knowing that those are goals you never fully achieve, we can always get better in them. And they're not classic goals that are clearly measurable with the timeline associated with it. But that kind of helped me kind of crystallize the process of the values are our goals. Almost at my core, I'm still a fourth grade teacher down at Chad Ford Elementary School. The standards are our goals every year essentially for the kids. My goal is that every student I teach achieves that standard and then here's everything I'm going to do to get it there. The values almost identify the standards for our district and then here's what we're going to do to forward that work and to get us there. So just, I'm being even more long-winded, so I apologize, but it's been rattling in my head and I really appreciate the point that you bring about, Dr. Key, that while goals may not be the right term for it, it all gets back to core, what is most important to us and our values? And I think that's, the initiatives up here are things that will really forward that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm, I'm going to offer a different take on this though and and effectively issue a challenge to you. And in a way that makes them more goals. Uh, there's measurements of success is one of the columns there. I'm, I'm a little disappointed by the lack of specificity of where we're trying to go. I understand some of these are journeys that are going to take more than this school year to achieve. But I would challenge you to find very specific deliverables for this school year that are quantifiable, that you can come back and say, we did this. Some of them are, we're going to get this process done, so it's a very binary outcome, but some of those that are incremental. Let's chart the pathway to where we're going and say, where should we be at the end of this year with very specific quantified metrics in that column that defines success? And that will turn that list into a goal, goal list for this year.
Mr. Richards, I I agree, particularly if we're looking at like the academic achievement by by setting, by defining, how do we define the success of an increase in students achieving proficiency? Is that a one, you know, is that one percent increase, is it a five percent? So that it's, so that to your point, it is, it is by by coming up with a very measurable um, desired outcome, you know, I was about to say goal, but we've been hammering that word to death right now.
I appreciate that, this great feedback, thank you.
I'm just listening to what you're both saying and I'm thinking that I I do like this format and I I'm thinking about the fact that every probably, I believe every one of those point people is an overachiever and an exceptionally hard worker and will go far beyond what is possible, what we think is possible. And I also, um, I'm thinking that in a lot of those categories, it's kind of broad. And so when you, if you, I'm not sure how, I hear what you're saying. And I'm also not sure if we set a very specific metric, how that impacts the complexity of where they can go with the, i- i- if maybe, and I'm trying to, can't really think of a good example, but you know, even in the um, increased proficiency, something, something. Perhaps it, it, if you set this goal, but perhaps it looks this way as they go through it. I'm, I'm just, I'm just talking out loud.
Look, I, from a professional standpoint, I I work at an organization, we've been grappling with this very problem of of how do you define goal? And every year we come back to the same conclusion, which is we didn't do a good job defining what the goal was. And and I'm trying to bring that lens to this process and say, I think we could get the outcomes that we want, but it does require being very thoughtful and specific at the outset of what you're trying to measure and what you're going to define as the the hurdle for this academic year. And you need to be very rigorous about that process early uh, before you set everybody loose chasing those particular goals. And I, I think that's, that's some of, I think the overlap of what we're talking about here is is coming into view. But it's hard, th- this is a very hard process. I want to say as as an organization, I've, I've lived it for the last four years trying to be very specific and it's much harder than you think it is um, to pull off.
I had, I have a decade of the Six Sigma Black Belt, you know, like that, that, what's the problem statement? How do you define and what is the metric? And then I get lost in it because the heart and I I, I'm trying to reconcile that, like, you know, at the end of the day, values are heart related, yet they have metrics. And so how do you combine the two? I don't know. It, it, it's, it's a struggle.
In my time on the board, I can remember years where it was as a a statement, improve student test scores or efficiency on this by this percent. And the administration, we worked really hard. I think it was mostly when I was coming on the board that the goals read more like that. And they worked hard, but it wasn't like, it wasn't really capturing the work that actually needed to be done and they were chasing something. So I, 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 I'm used to a more corporate, like you're going to set this thing and here's the steps that you're going to do to achieve it. But somehow it doesn't, didn't work as well in education, although it feels like it should. So I understand the, the instinct to do it versus these are the things we're going to work on, but they're not really goal statements. It's more like priorities and where we're going to focus time and try to move the needle to, you know, along, along these value areas. But there's not like quantifiable, here's our five top goals, which would be so easy just to talk to. I, I see the challenge and I think we've tried other ways, but I felt the limitations in those ways too. Because we were chasing some metric that wasn't the right metric and you spent so much time talking about was it the right one? And then you didn't achieve it, but great things still happened. As Ms. Anderson was just saying, this, it went this other direction that was better than anyone could have guessed when the original goal was, was set.
I'd be okay with that outcome frankly. But but having something to focus on just feels really important in this process to me personally. And if over the course of the work during the year, you decide that we, we cast the goal incorrectly or or different developments led to some reprioritization, that's reasonable and that's a good outcome. But I think to have uh, the target out there very explicitly at the beginning just feels, it feels right and I think our community, not just this board, but our community, our, our, our taxpayers want to know exactly what we're aiming at, which direction we're moving in. I think that's a really compelling way to tell the story to people. I think that's a really compelling way to tell the story to people who may not be as plugged in as the people around this table.
You know, one of the things when it comes to metrics and, and kids, right? And testing, um, is it's hard to, it's definitely hard to put the hanger hat on. You know, what, what is an appropriate increase in, in metrics when we're dealing with human beings that have complexities? And you talk about when we, I mean, scientists at heart, right? And all the variables that go into, that are, are controllable and uncontrollable when it comes to student performance. And I think that's most likely why generally in education, we struggle and try not to put, always put those kinds of, those, those numeric targets on certain things, right? Additionally to, you know, I think one of the things that inadvertently, um, I think sometimes when we can put pressure on people to, to our students or, or teachers or whatever, to perform to a certain degree, where we lose track of what it is that we're actually trying to do is develop the whole child. And we kind of focus in on, we gotta move the test scores 5%, right? So, so there's a, there's a very delicate balance here, I think, when we're talking about how to put together, you know, goals and metrics versus aspirational goals. So I will offer this to say, for example, if we talk about early literacy. And then there was, you know, when the No Child Left Behind came out, I remember and I was, and they were like 100% proficiency was the goal. And I remember being in schools going, we will never meet, meet 100%. Like that, that's just not going to happen, right? But I liked, I liked the, the message behind that. I like the message behind, all of our students will, will be on benchmark by third grade, right? And that's something to shoot for, knowing that that's a, that's a incredibly aspirational lofty goal. But it gives you a target at least, right? So let us retreat on that a little bit and think about that. I just wanted to share a little bit about why it is challenging at times to put that metric in place. But I also get what you're saying and I do think aspirational targets are important. Right? So, so let's, let us retreat on that and think about that. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say through my two cents, and I, I do like the format as others have said. And, and the statement about perhaps the values are the goals and, and these are something else resonates with me as well. I, I do think though, it is useful as has been brought up to try to be as specific and measurable as possible. But, but we talked about how difficult that is. And, and I'll just say, I think over the 15 years of doing 15 different ways of having done goals poorly, we've still produced a pretty good product. And so I think whatever it is we're doing is working despite it not being worked outright.
All right. Well, thank you everyone for the thoughtful conversation and, uh, feedback. And as I mentioned, any other thoughts, be it at next week's regular board meeting or just, um, separately, please don't hesitate to reach out and we'll certainly come back with a refined draft for September. Thank you for the time, Dr. Ryan.
Sure. And Mr. Allen, I believe that concludes policy for tonight.
Dr. Ryan, thank you very much. Mr. Autobard, my board colleagues, we're done with policy. Back to you, Dr. Brada.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Uh, moving on to facilities with Dr. Key.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Brada. We only have one item today and I'm pretty sure Mr. White, Mr. Whitesl has been really busy this summer. But he only put one item for us to discuss today. Most likely the next week might be the big aha, what all has happened in the summer, right, Mr. Whitesl?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Dr. Key. And, um, yeah, this month we do only have one voting item, but I do have, I'm going to give a verbal update on facilities department and our school preparations and various, uh, projects and just a quick update after we discuss the voting item. So, uh, the voting item this month is a proposal, uh, for a design contract for a new rooftop solar array on our high school roof. Um, if we scroll down that, um, proposal a little bit, you can get an idea of the, uh, scope and scale. The proposal, you can see there, that's, that's the high school roof and that's the, uh, blue or the sole solar array. This proposal will address designing the system, putting together bid specs and drawings, the interconnection coordination with PICO, bidding the project as well as construction administration services during, during the construction phase. The total project cost is estimated to be approximately $1 million. We would fund approximately 700,000 of that out of the long range facilities plan. And then a recently awarded PA Solar for Schools grant would fund the other 300,000, 1,000 of that. Additionally, per current regulations, uh, we would also qualify for the IRA direct pay, which would be an additional $200,000 toward, towards the project, meaning we would pay approximately 500,000 or 50% of the total cost of the array. Um, there are also additional PICO incentives as well as, um, PICO rebates that would provide additional fun, funding as well. Our payback period, um, if we want to scroll down a little bit to the next page, we just included in, in the proposals, that's, that, that's an outline of the, um, uh, cost, uh, the one, the, the $1 million there and the grant, 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 grant request being just a little under, uh, 300,000, 1,000. This proposal would be included in that other soft cost line, line there. So this proposal is included in that one, $1 million product, project cost. The next chart there just shows a payback period, um, of approximately nine, nine years, with the IRA direct pay funds and 12 years without the funds. So, and, and over a 25 year lifespan of the system, we would recognize at least, uh, $1 million in, in electrical savings. We are recommending approval of the design proposal with Practical Energy Solutions in the amount of $79,800. Does anyone have any questions?
I, I only got lost, uh, in the, um, the conditions on the IRA money. Maybe you could simplify it and summarize kind of what, what are the key contingencies that we have to meet in order to qualify for that money?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. And we actually reached out to our, um, uh, tax strat, strategist on, on this. Because the OBBB, the one big beautiful bill did, uh, change the rules around sol, sol, solar, but they didn't change anything regard to the elective pain, payment with, which is the fund, the refunds available to tax exempt. And, and these, so if a solar project has started construction before July 2026, you have until July, you have until 2030 to complete the project. If your project doesn't start by July 2026, if it starts after that date, you then have to complete the project sooner. You have to actually complete it by December 31st of 2027. That's the current restrict actions. This, if we approve this proposal, we would, we would plan to start construction before this July 2026 date, so that we would have until 2030 to actually complete the project, but we don't expect it'll take that long.
How long will it take?
The, um, um, the, the bulk of the work to get everything up on the roof would, would, would be done next summer. With us then getting all the interconnect action stuff set up and completed, targeting by the end of 2026.
Sounds like we're good in either scenario then.
Yes.
They have a very specific start construction definition, which I deal with all the time. And it's, um, you just have to, you have to show that you've started construction. And in this case, you could start an interconnection application. You could order the parts, there are many ways you could just kind of fill in the so-called start construction.
We're going to send you up on the roof.
Yeah, just go. But I mean, I think the one big beautiful bill, uh, did not serve solar really well in the federal programs. However, the state's compensating for it. So the good news is that Pennsylvania is still very supportive of it. Now, how long can they be supportive would depend on how much funding they actually have left. So, you know, this is an opportunity which may not be there for too long. So just kind of on that, um, in terms of transfer tax, what happens with this, with the, uh, school district, we get the money direct. Uh, and that's truly, you know, public, public entities get it direct. So that's a, a lot less risk than companies like mine, you know, we have to go through hoops. But, uh, this is actually a good setup from that perspective. So, uh, the PICO incentive is not shabby either. So, you know, I mean, it's almost, almost 10%, right? Like it's, so, you know, these things are, are all adding up to almost 50 to 60% discount on the project. And before the tariffs hit, you know, because tariffs, tariffs might increase the cost. Now, I don't know about the tariffs, uh, Mr. Whitesl, do you have any, in, in, any idea on how tariffs might negatively impact the cost of this project?
Well, we, we, there, there are going to be requirements for producing, um, domestic product and using domestic product in the project. So, so that, that should certainly, um, help with the tariff issue.
This code that you got, are the solar panels made in US?
We, we will put bid package together with specifications that do require, um, that, that they're made in US.
Yeah, just recognize that made in US will be more expensive. So we just have to make sure we're dealing with that, so.
I, yeah, I, I, I feel cost wise that, you know, we, we may be hitting a, a, a good window here in supply and demand. There was a lot of ramp up because of demand that was looking because of all, all the incentives. That maybe that there's a good opportunity for us in this window to, uh, still get some good pricing.
Couple of other things on the table that I just want to highlight. So things that I know sometimes maybe that if you could go to that table, where they talk about, I think Mr. Whitesl's been very conservative in some of his estimates, which is good. Uh, and one of the estimates that he has put in is that our electricity price is only 5.6 cents per kilowatt hour. Now, I, I, I think, I think it we, my, my feeling is that as, as more and more transmission and distribution charges get added up over the next years, that number is gonna, gonna be going up. It has already gone up. Uh, and so that may be actually better than that. So that's a bit conservative. And I also think that there are the solar REX, the S-REX, they call them. You know, I know you dial that in a little bit. So, um, those are again, benefits that this project will have. And considering that, you know, maybe our electricity consumption will go up if we really continue to use more AI and stuff like that down the road. Having this idea of 25% production of electricity from our own solar panels is just a nice thing to have. That gives us space to grow on, in other things. So it's a good buffer for our variable cost down the road. So I, I like the project very much, but you know, I'm kind of biased.
Uh, there are no more questions. I'll just, uh, go on to facilities update. So with less than two weeks to go before the start of school, I'm happy to report that our buildings are in good shape and ready to go. Our custodial staff has been working tirelessly on our summer cleaning regimen and the buildings are looking great. Our ground staff have been working extra hard on our grounds as we have, um, we've been short staffed in the apartment most of the summer. Throw in the downright tropical weather we had in July and, um, it's no easy task to keep up with the grass and the weeds. And we still have two weeks to go to clean things up and, and we'll need all of that time. Uh, our maintenance staff has been busy with multiple projects around the buildings from LED fixture conversions to new hands-free restroom devices, to new water cooler hydration stations, to classroom renovations, to installing in the interactive panels and security cam, camera wiring. They took a lot on this summer and did a great job. We had a lot of capital projects that were completed as well, and also some in the process of completing over the next several weeks. Um, a few projects will need to continue into the school, school year, but nothing that will impact the opening of schools. Uh, we do have one project that was never able to get off the ground, uh, or should I say in the ground? That's the new, uh, public water service at Chad's Ford L, L, and men that manager school. We ran into some challenges that we are continuing to try to resolve with Chester Water, PICO and PennDOT. Just trying to resolve issues with one of those organizations can, can, can be tough, but throw them all together and it's a, it's a real test. We have put the contractor on a temp by temporary pause while we try to resolve these issues. Um, and we'll talk more about this at the September board meeting, meeting during our long range facilities plan update. And finally, our transportation department, everyone, uh, just thinks they're off all, all, all summer. But, uh, no, the office team has prepared all aspects of, uh, our transportation operations to get ready for the new year. Our drivers had about 15 routes that transported our students to E, to EESY in June and July. Our mechanics inspected and maintained our fleet of buses and our wash crew cleaned and detailed the buses inside and out. So facilities and transportation has been a busy summer. Big thank you to, uh, everyone involved to help get us to this point. We are excited about the new school, school year. And most importantly, we are, we are ready for the new school, school year. I'll, I'll, I'll end it on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Whitesl. Any questions? Okay. All right. That's all for facilities, Dr. Brada.
Thank you, Dr. Key. Moving on to finance with Mr. Schartz.
And I'll invite Mr. Dady to give the finance report.
Thank you, Mr. Short. So we have two items, uh, this month for finance, no voting items, both informational discussion. Uh, so the first 7.1 is a property tax rebate program. Over the past, um, probably about year, we've been having discussions and doing some research on a property tax rebate program. For those that are aware, we do have what we call a property tax rebate program right now known as Sage. It's more of a, um, it's not really a true rebate program. This recommendation that we'll show tonight, if you could bring up the, uh, attachment, uh, is more of a true, uh, property tax rebate program. Uh, so the recommendation really is to implement a real estate tax rebate program, beginning with the 26, 27 school year, fiscal year, to match the income based PA, uh, property tax rebate program. So Pennsylvania has what they call property tax and rent rebate program. Um, in researching what other districts around, um, really the whole entire Commonwealth, there's not too, too many in Chester and Delaware County. But, uh, looking Commonwealth wide, uh, a lot of the successful rebate programs really just do a direct match or some percentage match of the PA rebate program. So this recommendation would be a match, a full match. The, or taxpayers who would be eligible would receive a rebate. Right now, the current rebates are between 380 up to a maximum of, of 1,000. And that's depending on income. Now, if we look, it obviously will have a potential budgetary impact. I'll go into the details in a little bit, but really it's about a $35,000 estimate. And that would be really a reduction in real estate tax revenue collected. Uh, so next slide, just to talk a little bit about the eligibility. The eligibility would again be a direct match of the PA rebate program. So it would be for our taxpayers who are age 65 or older, uh, or age 50 and older and a widow or widower. And then, uh, or permanently disabled persons aged 18 or older. So they really are the eligibility. And then if you meet those requirements, one of those requirements, uh, then you have to meet an income requirement to determine the level of rebate that you would receive. So on the next slide, the current, um, income schedule, rebate schedule is shown up there. There's four buckets from, you know, no income, all the way up to the maximum income would be $46,520 to be eligible for a rebate. Uh, and these numbers do change. I don't want to say they change every single year, but they have been changing every year recently. And it's really set by the state and it has to do, uh, there's an inflationary measure, there's a, this, the, the SOL which plays into, um, the act one index does kind of come into this a little bit. So, uh, this again is the current, uh, schedule for the state rebate. Uh, the next slide shows Uh, the next slide shows what income counts. The income for this rebate program does not directly tie to uh state taxable, local taxable income because state and local taxes aren't applied to pensions. They aren't applied to social security income. Those income, uh, those sources of income do count towards this rebate. Uh, so right now pensions, for instance, or a hundred percent of that would be counted towards this rebate. Uh, social security is fifty percent. I won't go through the whole list, but this is posted. And this again is a direct match of the P A. Uh, the next slide shows the application process. Uh, so to apply for the U C F S D, uh, a potential U C F S D rebate, we would have our own uh tax rebate app application that we'll have ready to show the board in September. Uh, but we would require a copy of the P A one thousand form, which is the form that the state requires. Then would we would want documentation showing uh the the state actually approved and paid their rebate. And why we would want that is because that shows that the state verified income. So we don't want to verify income at the district level. We want the state to handle that. Uh, and then we obviously as di- a district staff would verify that real estate taxes paid. You would be ineligible if real estate taxes weren't paid for that year. Uh, so again, potential budgetary impact. How we looked at that, how we figured that out. Um, the two most recent years that we have data for twenty twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, we should get twenty-twenty-three at some point during the month of August. But that shows how many of our residents qualified and uh received the state rebate program. All of our residents, the ninety-one in twenty-twenty-one and the eighty-six in twenty-twenty-two were in that highest um income bracket with the lowest rebate of three hundred and eighty dollars. So that's how we came up with the thirty-five thousand potential. Uh, neither year hit thirty-five thousand, but as we look at increases in the rebate level, thirty-five thousand is a reasonable number for next year. We did work with Keystone Collections Group, which is the uh group that collects the uh local income taxes for Chester County. Again, not a perfect match because local income taxes don't include social security and uh pension. But looking at the data and working with them, we feel like these numbers are reasonable. There's not some hidden pocket that hasn't applied for the state rebate. Uh, so again, thirty-five thousand, a very small uh budgetary impact to you know, greatly assist some of these taxpayers. Uh, the next slide just shows some advantages. Next two slides would be advantages and disadvantages. Again, I'm not going to read all of these, but really it is about providing relief uh to the the taxpayers that need it the most in our school district. Uh, one of the disadvantages, there obviously is that small budgetary impact. So we would have to figure out how to uh make that up. It's either a a reduction in the overall budget or you're just shifting the taxes onto the taxpayers who can pay. Uh, timeline going forward. So uh we're obviously in August. September, we'll have additional discussion and then the hope would be for uh an approval in October. Then again, implementation would not be until the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. And in September, we'll have both the application and a copy of the resolution that would have to be approved in October to officially approve this rebate program.
So just a couple of clarifying questions. The the uh i- is it the intention to sunset the Sage program if we go forward with this?
That's not the intention. That could be a discussion with the board, but right now this could impact a different pocket of uh of taxpayers that wouldn't be eligible for Sage. There is a little bit of a different qualification for the Sage program. And again, the Sage program really is a a uh rebate for not a rebate, it's really payment for service.
How much do we spend on Sage right now?
Uh, it's well under ten thousand dollars that we spend on Sage every year.
Um, great. And then one of the key assumptions that you made uh is that when formulating the thirty-five thousand dollar estimate, that a high percentage of our eligible population did in fact apply for the state program in those years that you cited, correct?
Yes.
So there's not a hidden landmine here where suddenly we have we have effectively doubled the the reward for going through the paperwork and there's not some big pocket of eligible taxpayers that we're going to unearth by unveiling this program, I presume.
From all the data that we were able to look at, there we don't, we don't think that there's there's that danger to all of a sudden see a great, not a greater, a lot greater number of applicants than what the state has seen. Again, we should be getting the twenty-twenty-three data. Uh, hopefully this month. Definitely by October, but hopefully in August we'll have that.
So um, Mr. Date, so following up on on Mr. Schartz's question. If if we do go ahead and approve this 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 tax rebate and we still keep and we still keep the uh the Sage program in effect, would people who are eligible for both programs be able to participate in both programs concurrently?
Yes, I would think so. Uh, it again, the maximum that they can get from both the Sage and the uh new rebate program should be less than at most the maximum that they would pay in taxes.
Okay. And then and then secondly, with um looking at that estimated thirty-five thousand um uh dollar uh budget, you know, budgetary impact. If we were not to, if we were not to make a corresponding reduction in expenditures, roughly what would that thirty-five thousand equate to for, you know, in terms of taxing on taxes for people who are not participating in the program? Like what would that increase look like? Or other how for those other households?
Uh, that is a very minimal tax increase. I'll have that for September.
Mr. Dady, thank you for bringing this forward to the board for consideration. I think this is the kind of thing that we we would like to, I would, I use I language, I would like to do for our residents, but I imagine we all do because it's um, it's the residents among us that we that need the most help. Um, and it's kind of elegant that it's already, it's using an established criteria. It's it's piggybacking on an established process. We don't have to be kind of judge and jury of the situation. Um, and that's that's fantastic. Um, does the timing work that they would receive that notification back from the state in order for it to apply to their school taxes?
Yes, because it really would be a July. So taxes are issued July from the school district. They would have until really the next August thirty-first to submit that paperwork back to us so that we could brief rebate the taxes for that school year. So if it starts in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, taxes are issued July, they would go through the state process then. And then they would have until twenty, August of twenty-twenty-seven to submit the paperwork to us.
But they would need to pay that year's school taxes.
Yes, they would have to pay the twenty-six, twenty-seven school taxes, which is the same thing for the state. It has, they have to be paid.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I I also want to thank uh Mr. Hellrung because he's been sort of leading this and and Mr. Dady, I know you put a lot of work into this. This is actually, I think it aligns nicely with all of the conversations that we've been having and what we've been hearing from taxpayers regarding the middle school project, but this really was actually in the works well before we started talking about the middle school project. So I know Mr. Hellring isn't here tonight, but he really was um key to supporting this and and bringing it forward. So I just, I just wanted to make that public. Um, and also I I don't want to um lose sight of the Sage program and and changes that might benefit people who take advantage of that. Um, or just also reiterate that it's really paying individuals to qualify for the program for service to the district. And um it's probably a better deal for them to just apply for employment in the district because the the payment at that level is higher. So just let's keep thinking about how this, if it does affect the Sage program and then what to do with the Sage program. I don't want to have that drop off our radar.
I had a quick question, Mr. Dady. Is this per household income? Is that how they define it?
Yes.
Okay. And this is not something we have any control over how much it is. It's Pennsylvania law. The the limits, the the levels and all that. Or is it defined by us?
So this recommendation would be just to to mirror the state program? There are some dis- well, there's no district that uses a different income level. There are districts that do a different rebate. They might not do the full rebate. They may do like a third, like Garnet or Great Valley does a third of the they match up to a third of the state rebate, but they use the same uh income. And really the biggest reason is because then the state does the income verification.
Okay, so we we do have some flexibility if we wanted to change this program. Got it. Thank you. I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud. That's all. Um, you know, it is especially because of all the comments we got after the middle school.
To me, the appeal is that it really does target our neediest community members. And the this elegance or the simplicity of the implementation is really important to me instead of putting the onus on our administration to figure out who qualifies. I I wouldn't be interested in a program that went down that path personally.
Yeah, a lot of the successful programs really are just a direct match of the state rebate program. Uh, so moving on to seven point two is the monthly local revenue. Uh, and just a few highlights, a few discussion points. So the twenty-four, twenty-five data is on there. It's through July. Um, again, that's not final yet. So that second column um is it from the left is the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We really have up until August thirty-first to finalize the accrual. So those numbers will change. And then when we look at twenty-five, twenty-six, specifically this real estate tax revenue uh number that looks low compared to prior years. Uh, by the time the taxes were sent out, the beginning of July, and then with banking holidays, there were actually three less banking days uh in July twenty-twenty-five compared to the prior July's. So if we take into uh account like the first week of August, we're in a good spot. Really, this number, it the key date is August thirty-first because that's when the discount period ends. So I I don't want somebody to read that number and get nervous that we're so far behind where we were last year especially. Uh, we we've already surpassed that in the first five, five banking days of August. Uh, if we look at uh interest income, I know that's been a topic through budget discussions. Uh, we kept the budget the same. Uh, rates right now are still about the same that they've been for the past couple of months. So there's absolutely no um concern with the rates. Really, the only concern we have now about interest income is the fact that the state doesn't have a budget. We're not receiving any state funds. We're also not receiving any most of our federal funds because a lot of our federal funds flow through the state. Uh, so the longer that goes on, obviously the less revenue we have available to invest. Uh, we still will receive a majority of our real estate taxes. So we'll still have um plenty of money to invest by the end of August. So I don't think the one point three million is a concern yet, but the further that the state budget goes out, the more that would be a concern.
And and just to clarify, the the delays in federal monies being dispersed as well as the lack of the state budget because of our robust tax collections, we have no liquidity issues.
There's no liquidity issues at all. Just to put it into perspective, we would expect to receive about two and a half million dollars by the end or middle of September from the state, and then it starts ramping up. So really, we're our liquidity, we're we're eighty percent of our revenue was collected by the end of August. So we have absolutely no liquidity issues at all.
But that is not the case for a lot of school districts in Pennsylvania.
I asked a leading question.
I think that's all for finance, Mr. Schartz.
Great. I'll turn it back to you, Dr. Barada.
Thank you, Mr. Schartz. Moving on to personnel with Director Simonson.
Thank you, Dr. Barada. At the beginning of the meeting, Dr. Barada announced that we uh met in executive session prior to this meeting where we discussed several of the personnel agenda items that are not appropriate for public discussion. Tonight, we have four agenda items to vote on. Uh, I will bundle those into two votes. So the first one I move, we approve agenda items eight point five and the named personnel in item eight point six. These are uh ratifying employment and uh uh actual employment.
Second.
Uh, I don't think there's anything to discuss. We can go ahead and vote.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor approving agenda items eight point five and the name personnel in eight point six, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven zero.
And the second vote, uh, I move, we approve agenda items eight point one-three and eight point one-four.
Second.
These are uh uh the approval of our assistant principals at the high school. And uh eight point one-four provides compensation for them jumping into action early before their new positions take effect and is consistent with the collective bargaining agreement with the education association. I think we're ready to vote.
Okay. All those in favor of approving agenda items eight point one-three and eight point one-four, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven zero.
And we have two contracts in agenda item eight point one-two, and if I could ask uh Mr. Ottavard to just summarize those for us, get those on the table.
Absolutely, Dr. Simonson. So the first contract uh in eight point one-two is with R T C Security Services. Now, for years, we have partnered with Signal. They've come by different names, Signal, Signal Eight, Signal in Chester County. Signal is actually an overall organization with franchises out. So we've actually been working with R T um C services under the Signal umbrella. Uh, but for this year, R T C is looking to kind of separate and just contract directly with us. Terms of the agreement as well as the overall um hourly rate for our um security personnel who we work with um is unchanged and it's still been with Signal. Um, it is a minor minor increase for from um the rate from last year um in alignment with uh the previous organization. Uh, it would also allow us to continue working with the same people who we've had in our school. Uh, and then the second uh agreement is with an organization called Angels of Care Nursing Services. Uh, we use several uh different services for uh to support any healthcare needs, whether it's working with the student special needs or substitute nurse. Um, this is another organization that can add to our um kind of our bullpen of options should we need to uh contract with people. And their rate of service is comparable with the other organizations that we use.
Any questions on that, those contracts? If not, Dr. Barada, that completes our personnel business tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Simonson. Moving on to communications with Ms. Talbert. I'll ask Nikki LaRoya to come up to give us the communications report.
Thank you, Ms. Talbert. Good evening, Dr. Hoffman, uh, Dr. Barada and members of the board. It feels good to say, Dr. Hoffman. Good evening, Dr. Hoffman. Um, like all of our colleagues, the communications and community relations department is in full swing for the start of the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-six school year. Our new communication specialist, Kyler Murray, started in July. We're really excited about that. And he spent his day today, in fact, covering our Unionville High School athletes back in action. Um, if you haven't had a chance to check out that coverage, he's doing an extraordinary job of covering every single one of our um fall sports um and our marching band, who um we all know practices um perhaps hardest of all. Um, this Friday, August fifteenth, we close nominations for the twenty-twenty-five class of the U C F S D Wall of Honor. Our Wall of Honor biannually recognizes our alumni for their extraordinary success and contributions to society. The Wall of Honor reception will be held during homecoming weekend. So I hope you all will save the date and also um you all will uh think of those in our community that you know who may be nominees um and anyone who's listening on a recording tonight as well. Um, throughout August, our Back to School Basics series will cover everything from communication to nutrition, transportation, safety, academics, activities, and more for our current families. New this year, this series also sits on our website um so that it is easy um easily referenceable along with many of the most commonly accessed resources, including the annual student information update and our twenty-twenty-five to twenty-six FERPA notice, the current FERPA notice for families who may wish to opt their children out of photo and video coverage. It was a goal of ours to make that as transparent as possible for any family who might wish to use it. Um, you can visit uh to see all this information, you can visit ucfsd.org slash back to school. Finally, following last year's celebration of kindness, we will continue to highlight the tremendous character of our community. As Dr. Hoffman shared, this year's themes will be theme will be gratitude, and we look forward to sharing our thanks with the many individuals and organizations who support our school. with the many individuals and organizations who support our schools and our students throughout the year. I think Ms. Anderson has it exactly right that our district is defined these days not only by our strength of mind, but also by our strength of heart. And in fact, when I stopped by Dr. Rider's office in July to finalize plans for last week's surprise and delight, I discovered a social worker in her office who had kind of stopped in over the summer. And she shared something with me that perfectly captures the scope of our community engagement. That social worker, Bree, shared that she had not just had a list, but a full binder of partners that supported our students' every need. And we put that binder to good use last week and will continue to put that binder to good use. I think it's safe to say that there are hundreds of individuals and organizations who make our entire operation run. And I think it will be really exciting and inspiring to celebrate all of them. So I do want to give you a short preview of a video that we'll fully unveil at convocation last week. You don't get the full thing today. But you do get a taste of what last week looked like and hopefully the incredible things to come are for this year. I'll kick it over for the next slide. So again, just a couple of moments. We want to keep you waiting with bated breath until convocation next week when we'll unveil the full video. But it was a really wonderful day to celebrate some of our most important community partners. And we're looking forward to, like I said, making it to the bottom of that list by the end of the year. So this is my call to all of you. We already know there are hundreds of organizations and with your help, there are probably more. So please, if you know of anyone who's helping make us successful, we'd love to show our gratitude for them. So with that, back to you, Ms. Talbert. Thank you.
Any questions from anyone on communications this year?
Well, I'm sure we'll be hearing more, but thank you for the work. And I think gratitude is an awesome theme for the year. I think it's a good follow-up and if you can start each day with a little bit of gratitude, everything just goes better. So thank you for that. That completes the communications report. I can keep going. Just, I'd be grateful if you would just keep going.
With that, I'd like to invite up for his very first student activities report, Pat Clark. Come on down.
Good evening. First, as several people noted, it's Welcome Back Day on campus. We will have hundreds of students between our high school athletic teams and our marching band spending most of the daylight hours this week and next week preparing for the season. And I just wanted to take a second to recognize everybody who works behind the scenes to get that done. First, our maintenance staff in the buildings, our buildings and grounds personnel who worked really hard to get everything up and running for us this year, our coaches, our sports medicine staff and our athletic department team members. And we got off to a great start. Weather was great. It doesn't look to be too excessively hot this week. And so most of our teams will get through their two days. I have just a few informational items for this month that I'd like to highlight. We can go to the next slide, Ms. Jones. Great. So first is just an update on our strategic plan. We're in the middle of a five-year strategic plan for student activities. We're entering year three, smack dab in the middle. There are several objectives to be accomplished with six different goal areas in the strategic plan. I am doing my best to get familiar with that very comprehensive plan. Pat Crater's done a lot of great work with it and I look forward to carrying on that work. We're meeting with a lot of the different stakeholders to get kind of a pulse of the department and where we're at with our different initiatives. And the goal will be next month to bring forth a more detailed report about where we are in the plan. And there's also the, you know, it's in the works to do a midpoint review as well, right? So what have we done? What have we yet to accomplish and what adjustments need to be made in moving forward? So you can get to the next slide. In addition to our strategic plan, we're on a four-year review cycle, very similar to curriculum. And this is how we were able to make improvements and evaluate all of our programs. So for 25, 26, if you'll take a look, big one this year is athletics is in review. So the review year is a year to survey stakeholders, gather information and bring forth to the board, probably after the new year, some data about the state of our athletics program. This year, year two, we're in the planning stage for activities. So the review work was done last year and the hope is that later in this fall to bring forth some recommendations for our activities programs. Year three, we're in some implementation for performing arts and those kinds of things that have been implemented. Pat Crater did a lot of work with adjusting, improving supplementals, adjusting some of the activity fees. We've updated our program descriptions and then improved communications with our parent groups. I've got my meeting with OOMPA set up. I've had a great meeting with our new band director who's doing a really phenomenal job. He's really excited. He's going to continue the great work and the high standards that our band has had. And then year four is our clubs where we're monitoring. And the big initiative with clubs was elementary clubs, which were started last year. And then finally, just to highlight some upcoming events, August 11th is here. August 22nd is opening day for our fall sports. We will have teams home and away, but that's the first official day for PIA competition. The 27th will be the Patent Student Activities Night, which is a student and parent event, sharing the athletic and club options for our students. Patent Sports being right after Labor Day, Cross Country Bash, which is a phenomenal event. Tons of schools. It's a really good fundraiser for our cross-country program. 26th, as Ms. LaRoya noted, that's our homecoming game, which will also be Wall of Honor. 29th of September, we will start elementary fall activities. And on October 11th, March on the Brandywine, which again is a phenomenal all-day event where they'll bring in 30 or so bands. And they will be here from morning until night and it's really a great production. So those are the items that I had for this month. And are there any questions?
Mr. Clark, do you think school board members will get all event passes again this year for athletic events? We got them like staff last year. They were kind of handy. You might be able to arrange for that?
I think so. I'll probably have to ask Mr. Dade about that one. I don't know. But certainly, listen, we would love our board members to attend. No doubt. We will work to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get skyboxes this year?
So I've been up on the press box roof. It's, if you know like the attic fold downstairs, that's where you got to get to. But once you're up there, it's a great view, Dr. Simonson. We can certainly see if you'd like to spend some time up on that roof taking in games. I worked at a district where they actually built a board reception room on the third floor. True story, it's the science wing and it overlooked the football field. And it was somebody who was really, really successful as a head coach. And if you went into the two science rooms, there was the the home team press box for the coaches and there was a board reception room building into the two science classrooms. So that does exist.
I told you we were low cost.
And I don't know that we're there yet. I think we have great facilities and great kids and I'm looking forward to a great fall.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Appreciate everything. With that, that concludes the student activities report. Excellent. Moving on to Safe Schools with Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Dr. Barata. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hoffman for his first Safe Schools report as the superintendent.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Allen. So with this report, there's not a lot of change from the previous report that we gave in June, other than that there were some things that occurred in June and July over the summer. You know, mainly in June that we did, as all of you know, we did our public presentation and our executive briefing on the state of school safety in our district. And in July, just some of the work around the district. There's been a lot of things going on, but just of note, some upgraded video surveillance across the district, which we're looking forward to. And new sidewalk and bollards at the Hillendale drop-off and pickup location, which I would say are much needed. Channeling my good friend and former colleague, Mr. Nolan, I think he was trying to get a sidewalk at Hillendale, maybe, I don't know, 20 years ago, trying to get. So I think I'm going to take a picture of this slide for him and send it to him so he knows that we have a sidewalk there down to the Hillendale drop-off pickup point to connect some things. So we're actually very happy about that. So that's a nice upgrade. So if we go to the next slide, just some upcoming events. I think the biggest thing really to highlight here is that our our Safe Schools Committee is re-engaging this month. So on August 13th, our steering committee will meet to plan, which is a couple of days, to plan our overall district safety meeting. The big thing about that meeting is that's going to be the meeting where we start to develop the workflow and the timeline for the upcoming school year's work. So like if you go to the next slide, you can see it's basically filling out the timeline for the work, right? So this meeting will help us populate September through August for the upcoming school year. So we're looking forward to meeting with our community partners and our first responders in addition to our community members to help us work through that process. So and as you can see, we all the way up through the August meetings, we have green mainly highlighted completed work. So if we go to the next slide, just some safety-related work for 25, 26 to be thinking about. As you recall, our personal electronic device discussion last year really came through the safety and security. That's where we did a lot of the presentations. And it came up to study that from a lot of different areas, but we felt like because it came through the safety and security committee, we wanted to kind of bring that forward through that process. Our Policy 218 review, as you saw in the district goals, is back up for us to take a look at. It's a good year to take a look at where we are with the data and study that data to make some recommendations going forward. Big driver of our work is the RVAT reports that we did with the state police and our PCCD rubric that we're using to apply to where are we with district safety and where are we falling on the rubric? So to continue to assess where we are and what prioritizing, what upgrades we want to make. And finally, looking at our threat assessment teams, upgrading our building teams who needs training. We have a lot of new staff. So we need to get our building teams updated and threat assessments. Our threat assessment team trained for our upcoming school year. So that's some of the big work, just the high-level things that you can expect to see moving forward. And then, yeah, that's all I have for tonight. As I said, it's relatively light for August, but I just wanted to put a couple of things out there that we're thinking about and excited to get the ball rolling this month with our committee meetings. And with that, Mr. Allen, back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Hoffman. Not seeing any other questions or comments from my colleagues. Back to Dr. Barata.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Up now on the agenda is an opportunity for community comments. I'd like to invite anybody in our community to make public comment. Seeing none, we will move to school director comments. Ms. Talbert?
I have no comments.
No comments.
No comments.
No comments.
Just one comment. I want to thank Dr. Key for continually sharing with us what you're learning through your company and your work and about Pennsylvania potentially becoming sort of an epicenter for some of this sustainability work and tied with AI. And I noticed when we were looking at the board goals, I think Mr. Crater was the point person for career pathways, the internship program. And so I think there's an interesting synergy as that unfolds for our students and career pathways. So thank you for continually sharing all your deep knowledge on that. Appreciate it.
No comments.
Okay, I have no comments either. I want to thank everyone for your time and attention tonight. Tonight's meeting is adjourned. Our next board meeting is next week, Monday, August 18th, 7:30 in the same district office. Have a great night.